All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the November 7th, 2019 Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting and Public Hearings. I'd like to call us to order now at 5:02 PM. Tonight, we have Father Daniel Bradenberg with us from both St. Brendan's and Pinecrest Academy. He's going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So if you'll please come forward and everyone, please stand as you are able.
I'd like everyone to invite you all to bow our heads and then turn to a moment of silence as we place our hearts before the Lord. Heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for the gifts that you give to all of us, how you have blessed Forsyth County in these past years of growth and development for so many people, so many businesses. We thank you for the blessings you've bestowed upon us, recognizing that to those who have received much, much will be expected. Though we thank you for your graces, and we especially thank you for the gift of life, of liberty, and the ability to pursue happiness according to your plan. We remember those words of St. Paul from Romans, Chapter 13. "Everyone is to obey the governing authorities because there is no authority except from God; and so whatever authorities exist have been appointed by God." And in verse 7, St. Paul continues, "Because the authorities are all serving God as his agents, even while they are busily occupied with that particular task." And this evening, Lord, we ask for your grace upon all of us gathered here that we conduct our business with great respect for the law, for order, and above all, for the good of society and the good of our brothers and sisters. May all that we do be for your glory and for the good and building up of our people here in the United States of America. We turn our hearts now to also pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And thank you for what all St. Brendan's does for the community.
All right, bear with me here. We've got a very long agenda this evening, but we do have a number of changes and announcements relating to that. I'm going to start with Commissioner Levent. I believe you have either some changes or some announcements to make regarding some of your items.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Matter of fact, I've quite a few, so bear with me here. Going into public hearings. Public hearing number four. When this comes up, I don't know if the applicants hear on this one. I most likely will hear the public hearing, and there's a good chance, just for announcement purposes, that we will postpone that to a later date, given the opportunity to visit your site. On public hearing number five, the counselor on that application has asked if we just do a pure postponement for 30 days, moving it out to December 5th. That's my motion.
We have a motion, a second, to move item number five to December the 5th. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hearing on to public hearing number six, there is a possibility that we'll postpone decisionally and have that public hearing, and the same stands with public hearing number seven, but we'll wait to hear what everybody has to say before we decide that. Thank you, ma'am.
And just for the audience's information, we do have a related item to that that will be coming forward on the 21st.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Which might be the date we move those to, should we move them tonight?
Right. Anything further?
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper, do you have any changes this evening?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills, do you have any changes this evening?
I have two. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone public hearing number eight until December the 5th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone public hearing number eight to December the 5th. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero, and that item will be heard on December the 5th. Do you have any others, Commissioner Mills?
I guess just an announcement on public hearing number nine. We will be having the public hearing, but do I need to make a motion to vote on, it'll be a vote on November 21st?
The decision will be November 21st? You can wait and make that after the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Any others, Commissioner Mills?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, do you have any changes this evening?
Madam Chair, I have one. I moved to postpone Old Business Number Three, Park at Creekstone, until the second meeting in January. The date has not yet been determined on the calendar.
That's Old Business Number Three, and that's, you said, the first meeting in January?
Second meeting.
The second meeting in January. Did you want that to come back in a public meeting or a work session in a regular public meeting? Yes, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with unanimous vote of five to zero.
And I'm assuming that goes back to public hearing. Is that correct?
It's an old business item. It will come back as old business.
Yeah, we've already had the public hearing, and that's going to come back as an old business item on January 16th.
Thank you, for the record, the 16th.
Madam Chair, the only reason why I ask this, because so much time lapsed, I didn't know if you wanted to do another public hearing or not.
Yeah, this was one that was regarding a possible abandonment of a road, so it's fairly limited in scope to that community. I know Commissioner Brown's been working closely with them. Any other changes from the agenda, Commissioner Brown?
No.
Thank you. Okay, I have some changes as well. Public hearing number 11. Let's flip to that page. Dramatic pause. I'm going to postpone the, this out to the first meeting in December to allow them to resolve some sewer and septic questions that they still have ongoing with this.
Second for December 5th.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a vote of five to zero. And that will be it for removals. Eric Johnson, County Manager's Office, do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you. Mr. Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, counselor?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Mills, looking at Old Business Four, which is the, it says, "Public Hearing Regarding County Initiated." That's the 233.7 acres, which is the Mashburn tract. I think at this point, my recommendation would be to move that to the December 5th regular meeting.
Some move.
With one question to clarify that, you said Old Business Number Four?
Yeah.
So it is not a public hearing?
It's not, and candidly, this is where it gets confusing. When we're ready to finally go forward on that one, there's a lot of stars trying to align to go forward on that one. We're going to have to have another public hearing on it anyway.
Okay.
But it needs to stay on Old Business for December 5th.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Should we, should we plan on going ahead and advertising it?
That's a good question.
I think we maybe should.
You want to go ahead and advertise it for a public hearing on December 5th?
I mean, that way, we don't have to postpone a vote again.
Clerk, can you clarify for the record whether we need to adjut, to reword the motion to indicate that that will be a public hearing? Did it state Old Business or did it state?
Yeah, and forgive me, I'll, I think, there's not been a vote, right? It was just a motion and a second.
There has not, that's why I raised the question.
So I think it will need, because it was to move it to Old Business. If we want to do a public hearing, then we will need to remove the second, and the maker will need to make it to move it to the December 5th for a public hearing.
I mean, do you think with the time lapse that that's necessary, that we should do that?
Well, we need to do a public hearing anyway, because there were some issues with respect to the legal description on the property, so I want to do that anyway.
Let's just advertise then and be able to do both the same night.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do it.
Commissioner Cooper, I think you have the second on that. Would you like to remove your second? Cindy, would you like to remove your motion and restate it?
Yes, I will. That, we move this item to the public hearing on December the 5th, as stated by counsel.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries with unanimous vote of five to zero, and that will be back to us in the public hearing format. Counselor, do you have any other items?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you. Tom Brown, I believe you may have an item or two?
Yes, I have one. I would request you withdraw public hearing number 17. That is essentially a duplicate or a prior version of public hearing 16, and all the content plus updates are covered in public hearing 16.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to remove item 17, to withdraw it from the agenda. Please vote. And that vote carries with unanimous vote of five to zero. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Mr. Perkins or Mr. Kennard? No? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Some move.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries with unanimous vote of five to zero. All right. Announcement and reports. I believe that Commissioners Cooper and Mills have an item. Molly, you want to read that for us?
Absolutely, thank you. A proclamation by the Board of Commissioners of Forsyth, Georgia, Forsyth County, Georgia. Whereas diabetes is a leading cause of death in Georgia and is an incurable disease in which the body does not produce or properly use insulin, a vital hormone in the conversion of sugar, starches, and other foods into energy. And whereas type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, a hormone that enables people to produce energy from food. It occurs when the body's immune system attacks and destroys the insulin-producing cells in the pancreas called beta cells. Its onset, pardon me, has nothing to do with diet or lifestyle. There is no prevention of type 1 diabetes and at present, no cure. And whereas type 1 diabetes strikes both children and adults at any age, it comes on suddenly, causes dependence on artificial insulin for life, and carries the constant threat of devastating complications up to and including death. And whereas more than 8,000 children and a currently unknown number of adults in Georgia live with type 1 diabetes each year in Georgia, there are approximately 500 children diagnosed with type 1 diabetes. And whereas an increase in community awareness of risk factors, symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the attention they need before suffering the devastating complications of the disease. The ultimate goal is to find a cure for diabetes. Now, therefore, the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2019 a Diabetes Awareness Month and November 14, 2019 as World Diabetes Day in Forsyth County, Georgia. In testimony whereof, we have herein to affix the seal of the county of Forsyth, State of Georgia, Forsyth, State of Georgia, and signatures of the members of the governing body, therefore, the 7th day of November 2019.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that's here to receive the proclamation?
Hi, there's anyone here for the proclamation for the diabetes? Would you step up, please?
Please come forward. Can we take that down for a second? Pierce. You want to give us a few words? You look really comfortable behind that.
I know, I am too.
You don't have to, you don't have to. You want to say something?
You have many words.
Natalia?
She's also a type 1 diabetic.
Thank you.
Just offhand, say that one of our high school students was just acknowledged by JDRF International Awareness Campaign on their websites. He's a wrestler at a student high school. I know there's other students as well, so thank you all very much.
Next, we have an announcement from Pat Carson.
Yes, Commissioners and citizens, tonight we recognize and honor Donna Cucarola, excuse me, Director of Procurement, who on July 7th, 2019, reached 25 years of service with Forsyth County Government. In acknowledgement of her extensive years of service with Forsyth County, Dave Gruen, Chief Financial Officer, is here to present the Milestone Service Award. I ask that Ms. Cucarola, Mr. Gruen, and the Board of Commissioners come to the podium to present the award.
Talk down here. Well, I have some things to. I'm not. I've got enough details this time. I can't rely on my memory, so I brought them with me. All right. 25 years, by my calculation, that puts you, starting with the county, back around 1994. A department at the time is called Public Works, now known as Engineering. And after she started with Public Works in 1998, procure, well, then it was called Purchasing, was formed, which became Procurement, and she moved to that department, which I guess makes you a charter member of that department. And in 2007, was promoted to the Director of Procurement. So that's been about 12 years now as Director, the whole time that I've been here. As the county's been emphasizing with staff acquiring professional certifications, I'm pleased to point out that Donna has several that she worked on hard over the years. One is a certification with the Universal Public Procurement Certification Council. A second one is she is a Certified Professional Public Buyer, and finally, she's a Certified Public Procurement Officer. It sounds like a lot of work and all that, and over the years. One thing she pointed out that she's very pleased with being able to accomplish with the board, and this goes back six years ago to a resolution in 2013, was having the board adopt a set of values and guiding principles of public procurement, because it is a different environment. When new employees come here, we try to explain local government is a different environment, not better or worse than the private sector, but it's just different. And especially that scene, I think, in the area of procurement with all the rules and guidelines and keeping us straight in what we procure and acquire. Also, as far as her professional involvement in associations is concerned, very active. She's, well, currently the Vice Chair of the Georgia Chapter of the Institute for Public Procurement, see this correctly. And she's been very active in that chapter for many years. I recall that since I've been here. She's had various chair positions and teaching classes, and has been honored to receive the Outstanding Service Award, and has been honored to receive the Manager of the Year Award twice. Also, on the national level of NIGP, she's participated in various committees updating, I kind of smiled, updating the Professional Procurement Dictionary, being the most recent one. I like terminology to be correct, so that's good. And she has also been a moderator at the National Forum. I'll just add a couple personal comments from my viewpoint in coming here. And when I come and sign various departments, especially because of this environment, I like to get an understanding of more of what they do specifically. Because I think of all the jobs in the county, no one quite understands what someone else does day to day, and all the things that are involved there. We just don't see that. And two things. First of all, I got to recognize very quickly the amount of intense detail work that's involved in procurement to acquire any service or goods, or that vendor, or now called suppliers, terminology in the dictionary, that supplier, to send you or provide what we expect, needs to know exactly what that is. And you get one detail wrong, and the wrong thing arrives, or you don't get the things you want in a contract. But the second thing, and this is where I want to see where Donna's brought a lot of value to the county, as in a special way from her position since I've been here, and that is, one of her main areas of work is with contracts and professional service contracts and bids and so on. Very complex. And she's been involved a lot where there has been latitude with the terms. I'll just say negotiating certain terms and dollar amounts. She's been very effective, or successful, if you want to say, very effective, and really bringing a lot of value in what she's negotiated with providers, companies, and so on to the county. And I saw that pretty quick, and that's something you want this position to really bring to the county. And I just wanted to highlight that, because people don't see that. And so with that, I want to thank you for your 25 years of service with the county, and I'll step forward.
All right, thank you. There are no further announcements. We'll move on with our agenda. At this time, Karen's going to read the rules of the meeting and announce any public comments speakers. And as a reminder, our public comments are for any subject, not necessarily a public hearing that is on the schedule, as we do have time allotted for those items in the regular agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to take a moment to review the meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who would like to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form, which is available just outside this room. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to Old Business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come basis and will be heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents will be heard first, with non-county residents to follow until the allotted time has expired. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have one public comment speaker this evening, Michael Maslanka.
Good evening. My name is Michael Maslanka, 6635 Grove Crossing Court, Coming, Georgia. May I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Unfortunately, the way that public comments are, it's really just an opportunity for you to speak.
Okay, I have two items. I have three minutes to get two items in?
Sure do.
All right, buckle up. In April of 2015, Waste Management acquired Advanced Disposal. My bill that I received in July of 2019 increased 40%. I called Waste Management and asked why, and here was their response. To collect refuse and recycle is $58 a quarter. To collect refuse only is $36 a quarter. So with that being the baseline, Waste Management is discouraging recycling. Walking through my neighborhood yesterday, which is my pickup day, half my neighbors did not have their yellow recyclable bin by the curb for pickup. So being a rookie statistician, that would tell me that our landfill is going to have 50% more garbage. My next question concerns a bid you guys are going to vote on for a new chipper for roads and bridges for $70,500. In five minutes, I went online this afternoon and found a used chipper with 450 hours on it for $56,500. To ship it to Coming by yellow freight is $725. So that's a potential saving of almost 23%. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no additional speakers signed up. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session of October 22nd, 2019?
Some move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meetings and public hearing of October 24th, 2019?
Some move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with unanimous vote of five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries with another unanimous result. As we move into public hearings, Karen is going to read another announcement regarding the requirements for speaking during public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the public hearings portion of the meeting, each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who would like to speak should complete a public hearing sign form, a hearing form available just outside this room. Please fill out both sides and submit your form to the clerk when approaching the podium to speak. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will be divided among the speakers, and we will provide a reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Tom, if you could brief us on public hearing number one, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one, application VA 190043. This is located in Commission District Number One. It's a public hearing for Kevin Grosvenor regarding the variance to Forsyth County Unified Development Code, Table 15.2. This request is for a lot size variance of 0.038 acres to allow, to allow a lot to be 0.962 acres instead of the requirement of one acre. The property is currently zoned A1. It's located on the east side of Hyde Road, approximately 750 feet south of Hyde Drive.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And we are now open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time. Hi, could you just give us your name and?
Sure. I'm Kevin Grosvenor. I'm the property owner and bought the property three or four months back, and just a little bit short to try to split and to be able to put two tracks, to put potentially two homes down the road. We're looking to put a primary on the house, you know, with the first variance, potentially build another house for a family member in the future. And I've lived in the district since 1997, and just here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Hey, my name is Brian McMillan. I moved here about three years ago. I own the property. It's kind of in front of his property, and his property is shaped as a flag lot, so to me, it's not conducive to dividing into two parcels, because if it was a large square lot, I could see you dividing it and having, you know, .96. But really, the front of the lot is not usable. It's not buildable. So you're going to have to put two houses in a very small section of the rear of the property, both of which end up being behind my house. I already knew I was going to have one house built back there, but now I'd have to put them out to the side, and it'll be in a small area. It's also going to have to be on septic, so you'll end up having two septic tanks in a real close area. There's not sewer immediately adjacent to this property. So for those... immediately adjacent to this property. So for those reasons, I would like you to decline this request for variance.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And our public hearing is now closed with unanimous vote of 5 to 0. Commissioner Cooper, this is your district. I'm sure you may have some questions for the applicant and perhaps the neighbor.
I do. Yeah, that's fine. Kevin, Mr. Grosvenor?
Yes, ma'am.
On this, could you tell me what the units are, the houses around your property where you're wanting to do this? The size of the lots?
The size of the lots around the property?
Yeah, give me a visual of that.
Yes, ma'am. So how big is your lot, Brian?
One acre.
Okay, so Brian's right in the front of me at one acre, and the adjacent property next to us is, I'm going to guess, around an acre or so to the right of us. There's a neighborhood behind us, which is Ryan's, excuse me, which is Rosewood Lake, which are all, you know, acre, acre or so lots, maybe even a little smaller than that. And then they put a new subdivision in that is probably a three-quarter acre lots, that's a neighborhood. What's that neighborhood right next to you? Yeah, so there's a neighborhood that's been there for a couple of years next door, that are three-quarter acre neighborhoods. And as far as the sewer, you know, we are working to get sewer to the property instead of doing septic, and been working with the county. It sounds like there's sewer about 1,100 feet from the property, and that's something that, you know, we would like to do, is to bring sewer into it. I don't know if that makes a difference or not. And the other thing is, is we're looking to, you know, build more of a farmhouse-style house, like we're seeing in Milton, they're popping up with horse fences in front, and putting up, you know, a nice 4,000, 5,000 square property, you know, house on it, and, you know, with white, and looking at building potentially both of them, you know, so it'll be a nice look. And across the street, I'm sure you know the new school, the Hyde School, has been proposed and coming in, you know, so we're just looking to get out of the neighborhood. We've lived in Vicry Springs now for the last 14 years, and just, you know, our kids are grown, and looking just to build a house that we can, you know, just keep forever, so.
Okay. What are your projected square foot on the main house?
4,000. I've got some pictures of it, if you'd like to see.
Yeah, I would like to see those, if you'd like to turn those over to... And what size is the house, like the mother-in-law unit behind it, and that's what you're planning on? That's what you're asking for?
Yes, ma'am. It would be to the size, and both of them would be about 4,000 square feet.
I see.
35 to 4,000 square feet.
Okay, on one acre, or less than one acre.
Yes, ma'am, just shy of one acre.
Is that shy of one acre in total for both lots, or is that, as you've subdivided it, and you have a one-acre lot and a .96 for the other additional lot?
That's correct.
Okay, the second part, the second one. Okay.
Sorry, please. Oh, absolutely, yes.
Just for clarification, point, so you're going to have an acre lot on one, .962 on the other, correct?
It's actually .003 short, so yes.
On one of them?
Correct.
The other one would be the full acre, you're not asking for the variance on one of them?
Correct.
Okay. That would be, the smaller one would be about 40,000 square foot lot.
Have you guys got the drawings that were submitted as well?
It's 41,000.
That's right. But here's my point. Tom, what is required for a septic tank? What's the minimum, is it 30,000?
Well, we don't have, it's dependent on the Health Department.
Health Department.
Right.
Yeah, and I think we moved our, so there is in our categories for septic, like a rez two, with septic or with sewer, and the difference is a minimum of 30,000. So if his land perks, and Health Department agrees it perks correctly, he's got 41,000, 41,000. I mean, it's not, they don't find that an issue, Health Department. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Yeah, the, I did want to say the, like, Rosewood, my lot's actually probably the smallest, besides the neighborhood, the new one to the other side. And on that neighborhood, there's a 50, 75-foot buffer all the way surrounding that neighborhood. I assume that's how they got the higher density to do that neighborhood. Rosewood, there's a lot adjacent on the other side of his, is about three acres. All of Rosewood that backs up to his lot is also two, mostly two-acre lots. Rosewood is not one-acre, sub-one-acre lots.
If this is going to be an ag lot, Tom, in a 50-foot build line on the front and back, and 25 on the sides, when they're ag lots?
25 on the sides, 50 on the back.
So he has that also?
I hadn't seen his plans, I'm not sure.
Well, ag lots are required to do that.
Yeah. And there, and you know, I don't know if you, Commissioner Levin, if you'd like to see the plans, I've got big drawings here that we're drawing up.
Okay. We don't have a whole lot of one-acre lot houses in this community, so.
So just to clarify, you're wanting to, altogether you have got 1.962 acres? That's what you've got altogether, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're asking for the two units, one on one acre and one on this one, that's just a, this shy, just shy of one acre?
Yes, ma'am. Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And all the setbacks and stuff we're drawing up.
And of course you would have to comply with that, which is through the county Planning and Development.
Correct.
And I'm sure that, well, let me ask, the two of you who have met and discussed this...
Oh, he did come to speak to me. I look forward to having him as a neighbor, and I had really think about coming and talking, you know, in opposition, because I didn't want to create any kind of blood with a new neighbor or anything like that. But I don't think the land is truly conducive to having two homes on it. Because if you look at, I mean, if you had the plans in front of you, you can see like the whole front of the lot is, you know, not a buildable section. So it's not like you're really spreading out the, that's my lot, like, notched in there. The whole front of the lot is, you know, narrow, not buildable. So really, he's only able to build in a back, smaller kind of section. So it's like, it's really not like you're just fitting it on .96 acres, it's like you're putting them into a really small section.
And what you're asking for tonight, though, is the ability to apply, to propose to have this built, because it has to go through Planning and Development?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
For the approval of that?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a 301-foot line on the back property. To just assumption you're close to doing it in the middle, it's 150-foot wide each, or feet, if you want to call it foot or feet. Most of our ag lots today have, what are they, a minimum of 150? Is that why it's offset like that? Okay.
That's right. Looks like they've pulled back that front line to comply with the lot with requirement.
Okay. It complies with our code, and he's not asking for rezoning to rez three or four or two, or still keeping it an ag lot?
On this, of course, again, this would just be for the option of having the one, one of the acres to approve this, because you're just shy of two acres on it.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. That's the only reason, yes, correct. If it was at two, it would just be a no-brainer. I mean, I wouldn't be here.
Correct. And do you feel better about the septic tank issue?
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't my only, that was just one thing that I thought about, but, you know, the layout ends up not being good, but it's, I'm usually for someone doing whatever they want to with their property, but this is zoned this way, so he's actually having to ask for something out of the zoning requirements. If he was at two acres, I understand it's a small amount, but it's set at one acre because that is the zoning requirement. So I would not want to allow variance, because it isn't, already it's not a very conducive lot to build in that way.
Okay.
So it's, while normally you may not consider all those things, because you're like, hey, you're already at two acres, well, he's not at that. So to me, we should be able to look at other things that aren't, you know, the normal part that you might look at, because he's asking for a variance, so.
I respect that. Of course, he does have to go through Planning and Development, and there's quite a few requirements there and conditions that would have to be met. So this is not approving even the layout that he's proposing. This is just approving that there could be two units on this, which is just shy of two acres. So. All right, I would like to make a motion that we approve the variance to UDC Table 15.2 from, for VA 190043, from one acre, you have one-acre lot, and for the, to approve the lot, .962 acres, and in addition to the one-acre lot.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And the motion does carry with a vote of 5 to 0. Public hearing number two, Mr. Brown?
AZ 190028, located in Commission District Number Two. It's a public hearing for Ted Ray regarding the amendment of Condition H, placed on zoning application 2339. The applicant's also requesting a variance to reduce the exterior setback 45 feet, to allow the exterior setback to be five feet.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We're now open with a vote of 5 to 0. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
Thank you for the time. I'm Ted Ray. I'm the landowner that's asking for this change in the rear setback variance. If you can see the drawing that I turned in, a couple things. One, I've had all the adjoining neighbors sign off on this, and that they're, they're fine with it. It's to go ahead and put a pool, and cabana, and sports court back there. And then I own all the land behind the property, the whole distance of it. In fact, I have a 75-foot undisturbed buffer that's back there. And I did that on purpose. We put a business in there, and we just wanted to keep it private. So there's literally, even after the variance changed, there'll be 80 feet of, between, you know, developed property and developed property, from mine to the Goddard School that's on the other side. Anyway, I talked to Commissioner Brown about it. We sat down, and I made sure there wasn't anything I was missing, or something he had a concern with. I met with the Laurel Springs Homeowners Association, and they were fine with it. I, and then again, I met personally with all the neighbors that the property adjoined, and they all signed off on it. And then I sent letters out to everyone within 500 feet, and I've heard nothing back, so.
Thank you.
Did you give blood along the way?
Yes.
Is there any, oh, go ahead if you're not finished.
No, that's it.
Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone else who is here to speak in opposition? Someone you missed. I'm kidding. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We are now closed with a vote of 5 to 0. Commissioner Brown, this is your district.
Ted, I just had one question that Steve had me to ask. You do have, you'll have a fence around this, right?
Yes, there's a fence that runs, separates the back of my house with these spools.
And around the pool, right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, still the fence that goes around. Yeah, that has to, this is just to modify the variance. Then once this is done, they have to go ahead and comply with the pool, get the permit, all of that.
Thank you, thank you. I'm ready to move.
Please do.
So I'd like to move that we approve the request for zoning amendment, or I'm sorry, conditions on ZA 2339, Peachtree Development Group with variance to the UDC Table 11.2A by Ted Ray, parcel 159-478, AZ 190028, District 2, as with the conditions as shown on the screen.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries with unanimous result of 5 to 0. Public hearing number three, Mr. Brown?
CP 190042. This is in Commission District Number Two. It's a public hearing for a county-initiated request for a conditional use permit to operate a vehicle sales dealership for golf carts in an existing building on property currently zoned M1, property is located on Shiloh Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We, Commissioner Brown? Waiting for your vote?
Oh.
There we go. And it is open unanimously with a vote of 5 to 0. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Sean Courtney from Lipscomb Johnson, 112 North Main Street in Coming, on behalf of, this application is county-initiated, but it's for Action Specialty Carts. This is M1 property in the Meadows, and the proposal is for a vehicle sales dealership, but it's just for golf carts. This is the building that we'll be in, which is 5790 Shiloh Road. This is, it's an existing site, and we've agreed to two conditions, that it be limited to golf carts, that it be limited to Suite 200, and that also the golf carts be displayed and stored inside the building. Darren Crosby with Action Specialty Carts is here, and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
Please vote. And the motion carries with a result of 5 to 0. We are now closed. Commissioner Brown, again, this is your district.
We want to come on up real quick. So we had the participation meeting, nobody came. Are these conditions acceptable, the revised ones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Anyone else have any questions?
No, I'll just say, yeah, this is something, this type of operation is something I've kind of struggled with over the last couple of years as well, looking for a way to differentiate between the way that personal recreational vehicles are marketed, displayed, and their impact to the surrounding communities vastly different from that of a traditional vehicle dealership. And I think it's something that, you know, I've talked to Mr. Brown about previously as well, looking for a way to try to capture that in our UDC, so we're not constantly having to come up with a variance, some way to kind of cap, you know, capture that, the essence of that in our UDC, so there's something they can apply for without a variance. So find a place for it. That's all I have on it. Any questions from the board?
Commissioner? Could I ask one question?
Sure.
When you say no outside storage, like outside storage yard, the only, there will be trucks behind the building in his, near the bay where the delivery trucks?
Well, that's, all the tenants have that same...
Right, right. I just want to make sure that...
And it fully complies with the owners, with the conditions of POA.
It does, with the Meadows.
So there's a POA in place for that.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that there weren't golf carts, the sales product out there.
You might want to clarify number two, because your last part says with no outside storage.
Well, the trucks aren't storage, they're...
They're closed.
The truck would have to sit idle for 96 hours to be classified as storage.
Well, this Christmas season might just do that.
I don't know.
Ken, would you, what's your...
Can you put in with the exception of, and list X amount of delivery trucks?
Well, he's complying with the POA already, so.
There's other businesses with other vehicles.
Here's my thought on that. We have a process for identifying what storage is, and if, to the extent that code enforcement or planning identifies vehicles converting from just a transportation use to a storage use, they'll write them a citation. And if they do that, they'll come back in front of you and ask for there to be some clarification on that.
But you understand if they sit during the holiday season for 96 hours, they're allowed to clarify it, is that?
That's right.
Okay.
And Commissioner Brown, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Forget, I'm not focusing on the last phrase of two, I'm focusing on the first one. What is the intention of the first phrase in two, golf carts shall be displayed and stored inside the building? Is, and what I mean by that, I'm not trying to act like I don't know how to read. What I'm suggesting is, does it mean they won't be displayed outside? There will be no display of golf carts outside?
That's correct.
Could I recommend then that we put an "only" after "shall"?
Yes.
I would recommend that.
Good. So I move that we approve the request for conditional use permit to operate vehicle sales dealership for golf carts in existing building on property currently zoned M1, parcel 064-029, CP 190042, District 2, with the conditions as shown on the screen, to include in number one, shall only be limited, and the rest.
Number two?
It was number two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shall be displayed only, right. As otherwise displayed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say, or please, please vote. And that motion carries with a 5 to 0 positive result. Number four, we postpone that to December.
I have that we proposed.
For the decision.
Number five.
Pardon me? That was just for decision?
For decision only, sorry.
Yes. So, Mr. Brown, will you please brief us on the hearing portion?
On number four, correct?
Yes, number four.
Thank you, okay. AV 19-0001, located in Commission District Number Three. This is a public hearing for Pradip Puttumili regarding the denial of a rear setback variance of twenty-five feet to allow a rear setback to be zero feet by the Zoning Board of Appeals on September 3, 2019. The application before the Zoning Board of Appeals that night was VA 19-0027. The property is located on Swindon Way, it's currently zoned Res 3.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We are now open with a vote of five to zero. If you're here to speak in favor of the application, please come forward.
Good evening, all. I'm Pradip Puttumili, homeowner of the property located at 1755 Swindon Way, coming. The lot is a sloping area with overall grade change of six feet, with the slope becoming steeper towards the southeast corner of the property. Because of the size and grade of the slope, considering safety for kids and adults, a construction of freestanding decks surrounded by fences is recommended and would be no benefit to the applicant. I have got HOA approval and supporting letters from neighbors from either side of the property.
Okay. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. And the public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Levin, I think you wanted some time to get with him before making a decision, but you may have a different idea about that now, so.
I'd like to have some dialogue before we make that decision completely, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Did you want to have, ask any of those questions here in this public hearing form?
Absolutely. Do you have letters from all of your neighbors in support?
Yes.
All of them, one hundred percent?
I do have, from the right, right side and the left side. From the right side and the left side, neighbors, I have supporting letters.
Do you have it from all sides of your property?
From the front, I did not ask them. Right side is completely woods, so we have the.
Do you have anybody directly behind you?
No one.
Nobody's behind you?
No one.
If you don't mind, I'd like to have those copies. What's probably going to happen is I'll probably need to just come visit and see what you're trying to do, because there's a reason why the Zoning Board of Appeals denied it. And I'd like to get a better look. You have a Res 3 building lot, do you know how many square feet that piece of land is?
Nine thousand square.
Very small. If you will leave your copies with the gentleman on the far right up front, please. I'm also going, I'll pull your address off of here, so I'll need to get a hold of you. Do you have your phone number on the paperwork?
Yep, I do have it on.
Okay. So I'll get in touch with you and we'll come visit. So I make a motion that we postpone this for a decision on November 21st.
Second.
And just as a point of order, and forgive me, Madam Chair, have we closed the public hearing yet?
Yes.
We have?
Yes, we did.
Thank you. Your motion's in order then, thank you.
So the motion that was made was to move this to old business on our next meeting, which is November the 21st.
November 21st for a decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And the motion carries with a result of five to zero. Thank you. Public hearing number five was postponed to December 5th, in which time it will, we will have had the hearing on the conditional use permit. Public hearing number six. Mr. Brown?
AZ 19-0005, this is located in Commission District Number Three. It's a public hearing for RUS-Al USA Inc. regarding the amendment of Condition Number One placed on zoning application 1698.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. If you're here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
You leave that condition up?
Managed. I'm sorry.
Or you have something else you need to run? Just put that condition up again, you had this up there for everybody to see.
We do have a presentation.
Counselor, would you read that for us? That condition you want to have removed?
Since we're actually in public hearing right now, do you want to wait to have that dialogue once we close the hearing alone?
Yes, Madam Chair, it'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead with your presentation, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Underwood with Miles Hands for Talent. It is very difficult, we have the next two public hearings, it's difficult to divorce these two, because they are really very much related, so I think we'll probably jump back and forth to address the common facts. But this property is almost seven acres, it is zoned M1 and has been since the 1970s. The application is for conditional use, whether, I guess we had to look at it, we have multiple applications going forward. This particular application is actually for a truck terminal, and we still take the position that this use is a truck terminal. However, as an accommodation, our client filed an application for a conditional use permit that has gone to Planning Commission, it's coming before you all in two weeks. So what we were hopeful we could do is go ahead, have these two hearings, let everything catch up, and then we can get decisions from the board next week. What's proposed is what's there, is an eighteen-thousand-square-foot building with one hundred and fifty-nine parking spots, and staff asked that we asked for three variances. Variance's two and three are to accommodate existing structures, so we don't have to tear down what's on the property. Variance number one is for a buffer variance that was already cleared when our client acquired it. GDOT has been using this property when they were widening Union Hill Road and they, it was originally a landscape business, GDOT used it, they started storing millings on the property. It was a mess, and we know that brought a lot of attention to neighbors. Our folks bought it and it's been a slow cleanup of the property, but most of that buffer was already disturbed, but we had to ask for a buffer variance as well. Now, this is the unpleasant part of the presentation, but we do have to stay our reservation of rights. First off, Rusal states and asserts that this use is a truck terminal, and we have a dispute as to how that is classified in the code. Sketch plat 1902, zoning condition amendment is at 1905, and conditional use permit 1914, were all filed for the purpose of exhausting administrative remedies. We are here hopeful that we can reach a zoning resolution on this, but if not, we do have to state we reserve all our rights, particularly under due process grounds. With that, we also have to state that there is a zoning condition that sought, says no transportation facilities, that we have asked to modify pursuant to this public hearing. However, at the time that this application was filed, a truck terminal was a different classification than a transportation facility. So we've taken the position that we're not a transportation facility, it is a truck terminal which wasn't allowed use at the time this application was filed. So therefore, the prohibition in the zoning condition doesn't apply, but our client is filing this application again as an accommodation. As, this property is located in a large industrial area, it has been located on McFarland Industrial Boulevard, and it is used for industrial use. Now, it's a little confusing, because what this particular case shows is that zoning lines do not always match tax parcel lines. The tax parcel is depicted in green, but it is a split zoning. ZA 1698, which contains the prohibition on transportation facilities, again, not truck terminals, but transportation facilities, says no transportation facilities on the portion of the property that's on the far west. The portion of the property that's subject to ZA 13 has no such restriction, and a truck terminal was a permitted use at the time that the use began, and so we filed a sketch plat originally just for that area of ZA 713. Staff said, no, you need to come back and amend your sketch plat to include the entire property, so we have. Now, as stated, the current zoning condition states that excluded uses include, but are not limited to, outdoor theaters, junkyards, sanitary landfills, heavy equipment repair facilities, and transportation terminals. Again, as an accommodation, we have asked to modify and remove the prohibition on heavy equipment repair facilities and transportation terminals. This shows the property, actually it was the date of the Planning Commission hearing about two weeks ago. It is in good order, but because it's a truck terminal, by its very nature, it's going to require the storage of vehicles, just does. Now, during the pendency of this application, I mean, I, again, we are seeking a political solution, but the truth of the matter is, our folks were confronted and said, well, you're not supposed to be using this property for a truck terminal, and they said, well, we can, the code allows it. So at that point, it was determined, well, this is not really a truck terminal, it's an outdoor storage yard, or open storage yard, and our folks were denied the ability to update its permits. Incidentally, the county has changed the code to make truck terminals no longer an allowed use. So I mean, it's pretty obvious what happened. It was an unsightly use originally, people didn't like that it was being used for a truck terminal. There was a determination made, says, well, it's not really a truck terminal, it's an open storage yard, we're going to force you to go through the zoning process. So here we are. With that, we can show that it is being used for trucking operations. You can see, for the most part, car carriers are what bring, are brought on site, you also see electrical cable lines, but it's an active truck terminal. And our clients, unfortunately, even though we've met with neighbors and we understand some of their concerns and we're willing to address them, they can't go away. They've put a lot of money into the site and they're operating, and it's not something that just says, you guys need to pick up and leave. Again, the property is in good order, it is organized well. What we are proposing to do to try to mitigate the impact, we understand there's been a lot of construction out there, it's not been attractive. But our folks now, with the completion of the right-of-way, are able to install a twenty-five-foot buffer along the front of the property. So it would be a twenty-five-foot buffer with a minimum six-foot-tall berm with eight-foot-tall plantings at the time of planting. The nice part about this is Union Hill Road is the high spot, and there's actually a natural loading ramp with a retaining wall about in the middle of the property. So what our client is proposing to do is to grade that off, push the dirt all the way up to Union Hill Road, build the berm, and it makes a lower spot, so now you actually have Union Hill here, you have the berm and the landscaping, and you have the industrial use at an area that can truly be screened. Now, in meeting with the neighbors, they expressed concern of traffic and additional trucks and make a safety hazard, and we do know that DeSanna Middle School is in the area. To that, again, we say, our folks certainly want children to be safe and families to be safe. I would propose to you that professional drivers are probably more cautious than the folks who are zipping back and forth there trying to get to work and get to Highway 400. But our client's use would add approximately ten trucks or twenty truck trips per day to the site. Actually, wouldn't add it, they're already occurring now, but they are responsible for approximately ten truck trips. The way they come in is solely through McFarland Industrial Boulevard, they do not come in through Union Hill. They would turn left, and there's a signalized intersection at James Road. That's how they get into the site. When they leave the site, it's a right-in, right-out only, so they can't go back out to James Road. They have to go and make a right turn away from the neighborhood to the southwest and go back to McFarland Industrial Boulevard. That is as safe a situation as can be, especially with the fact that you've got a large industrial park there. If you look next to the school, there's industrial traffic, there's industrial traffic, and there will be industrial traffic irrespective of the board's decision on this. This is a major industrial park, and to single out our client's use to say, well, you can't continue on this property because of an additional ten trucks that may come in a day is not appropriate. Now, also regarding the variance on the east side of the property, you'll notice that it adjoins an agriculturally-zoned tract, and that's what triggers this sixty-foot buffer. The board was recently notified by Georgia Transmission that they intend to condemn that property, and they're going to expand that electrical substation. So while the zoning may never change and we technically need a buffer, that is going to be an unfortunately fairly unattractive use necessary for utilities, but it certainly will not warrant a sixty-foot buffer along that eastern side. Again, we're, my clients are certainly open to any way and any suggestions on how to make this attractive and make it safe, but they can't go away. And we would certainly welcome any suggestions to work together on that. With that, we'll reserve the remainder of our time and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
All right, you've got nineteen seconds left. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this application? If you, please make sure you've turned in a public speaker's form, a public hearing form to our clerk, and you can come forward.
Madam Chair, would you like for us to time? If we could get another show of hands?
Can I see a quick show of hands about how many people are here to speak? So.
Two, two minutes apiece.
So here's a couple, couple of things we can do here. So normally, we're allowed ten minutes per side. If we want to go ahead, we can set a timer so you guys can each kind of break it up into two minutes until it's, until it's, we can, at the time, when we, when we come to the end of the ten minutes, we can take a vote whether or not we need to extend that, but please remember that there's another public hearing following, these are kind of tangent, so if you're speaking to the project broadly, you'll have another opportunity to speak if we run out of time during this one, so.
Madam Chair, I believe they're saying that this gentleman is their only speaker.
You'll speak for the group, okay.
He's speaking for the group.
Perfect. So if you want to go ahead, give us your name and you can begin speaking if there's additional time left, if someone else wants to come and add to that, we'll do that that way.
Thank you. My name is Shri Shanbagh. I live in a community very close to this plot, actually. And we're talking about one hundred and thirty-three trucks, and when we talk about trucks, these are like massive eighteen-wheelers that we're talking about. And then it also mentions that it could be an automobile service center as well, so it's not just a storage area, but also service center in that sense. And from a business perspective, one would expect that the business would like to have as many trucks going in and out of that plot, because that's how they make money. And that's contradictory to what the residents would like to reduce the traffic of heavy vehicles in their surrounding areas. And these trucks, these will be loaded and unloaded, which means it's not just these trucks, you will have supporting vehicles, delivery vehicles and other vehicles that would be coming in to be, to download or load and unload these trucks. So it's not just these large trucks. You're looking at, in general, large traffic, a large vehicle traffic increasing in this area. And if you look at it as a focal point of all the trucks coming in, these trucks are coming in there just for this business, otherwise they have really no business being in that area. So it's because of this truck terminal, you'll see a lot of traffic coming in. The road, Union Hill Road, as it was planned 2016, has not been planned for this kind of traffic at all. We recently have it widened up and it's beautiful, but I don't think that it was, if you look at it, it's a collector road, it's not been planned for this kind of traffic. So that's, that's the other part. So yes, the lot might be an M1 classification done in 1970s, but the area has changed completely since then. It's totally, there are a lot of residents, we're talking about thousands of families with kids. We have some excellent new schools in that area, DeSanna, we have, and the high school is also close by. This area is becoming a place where people would like to have their kids go to schools and be safe. Now, if you look at that road, I don't have the map actually up there, but if you look at the road, the intersection of James Road and Union Hill Road is where this truck will be taking a left turn. The sidewalk right there is where the kids will be walking to school, will entering the school. And we're talking about ten, twelve, thirteen-year-old kids just walking unsupervised, parents don't usually walk with them, they just, we're confident that these kids just go to school by themselves. So they, and look at the timing, this is the morning time, you have office traffic coming in, and you know how people behave when we're busy trying to get to an office, and if somebody slows down, slows us down, people tend to kind of swerve or change lanes and, and you have kids walking at the same time, and you put large trucks in between that. And you can see what would happen with, as far as safety of the kids are concerned, walking to these schools. You can imagine what we're talking about. And we're talking about a few thousand families out there with kids paying millions of dollars in property taxes, wanting their kids. in property taxes, wanting their kids to be safe in these neighborhoods. We want a safe neighborhood, we want our kids to go just walk to school safe, in a, in a safe neighborhood, right? That's what, all we are asking for. These are expensive properties, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in properties, value out there. And this is not going to just impact that particular area. We are also talking about, and I had mentioned this in the previous public hearing as well, where trucks typically, these large trucks would like to take a right turn, and you are going to see these trucks going into Helsian and so on. There is no way to just control them to be coming left to McFarland Road and into Union Hill Road. They will impact the mall area, the new mall area that we're building. So it's not just limited to these areas. There's an impact throughout this, just because of truck. I'm pretty sure we have a lot of other lots in Forsyth County where we could have a truck terminal closer to the freeway, away from residential areas, giving the same service. But this, the way it is right now, it's, it's just too much. And I, I know that some of the families have already emailed the commissioners, Commissioner Levant and other commissioners as well, are raising concern about this. So we are really very concerned about it. And we're not talking about a few families, this is, this is a residential area now, it's not just, it might have been classified as industrial M1 in the 1970s, but if you really look at it, the Union Hill Road entire, going from the 400 Bridge all the way up to Millinex and all that area is all residential now. So you're talking about a lot of families around that area, and you're talking about large vehicles coming into an area where there are a lot of residents. So that's the reason why we're trying to oppose this. So I hope you would consider that.
Thank you. There, there is a little over five minutes remaining on that, on this side of the discussion. If anyone else would like to come forward and speak to that, just please make sure you've turned in a form.
This is, I am Vidhu Dharmapalan. I also live in a community nearby, and I attended the last public hearing for this. So I'd like to give some more information about the proposal. So the first thing he's talking about is it's only 20 trucks. So my question is why they need 156 parking lots? So that's something contradictory for me. So the, and we, last public hearing, we asked for a log, how many trucks are coming in, how many trucks are going from the current parking space, but they are not ready to give that information. So what I feel that, or my other community members feel that, it's, there is no way for county or anyone else can control how many trucks are coming in, how many trucks are going out, and what time they are coming in and what time the trucks are going out. So that is a very big concern for us, because we have the DeSana Middle School and brand even elementary in that area. So for DeSana, it's just 1,500 feet from this truck terminal, so kids will be walking there, biking there. Right now, because of the four-lane road, there is a bike way, I think you all know that, there is a bike way constructed by the county. So people will be biking towards the greenway also, through that intersection. So all this will create a lot of problems when all these 16-wheelers are coming in. So I'd like to, all the commissioners to reconsider this proposal. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michelle Cleveland, 1455 Winshire Cove. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that the gentleman said when he was making his presentation in favor. First of all, McFarland Parkway, it's not an industrial boulevard, it's a parkway. And it's a lovely parkway, it's not an industrial park, parkway, it's an industrial, it's a friendly neighborhood drive. Also, it's not an industrial area. It may have been a large industrial area at one point, but there are more and more and more new family neighborhoods coming up, and there's more new family neighborhoods every day, there's more new family construction every day. So what may have been initially more of an industrial kind of area has been turning over towards a family area. And they're kind of on the downside of that trend. And the family areas are on the upside of that trend. And I'm very sorry for them that they're on the downside of that trend. But with the new school, I think it's the tipping point. That's just my thought on that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have about two and a half minutes remaining. If anyone else would like to come forward? I'm seeing none. Mr. Underwood, did you want to use your 19 seconds, or we'll wait till the next public hearing?
Just wait.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote. Public hearing is now closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioner Levant, this is your district, and as we discussed at the beginning of the meeting during agenda adoption, the intention is to have this public hearing, but the applicant had actually requested that the decision at least be moved out, so...
I just have a few questions for the council representing the applicant.
Yes, sir.
I believe you made a statement that there's already 159 parking spots, saying that's what you're asking for, as what already exists, is that correct?
Correct. And that is, again, a lot of this is what was, we were required to request by staff. They counted both the truck parking and the driver parking as a space.
It's just your comment was that those 159 parking spaces already exist?
Yes.
What was the use before this use is there today?
It was a storage lot by GDOT, and before that, it was a landscaping company.
It was a landscape company. Did a landscape company have 159 parking places?
I don't know.
Okay. The millings that you stated that GDOT brought in, are you stating that your client brought no additional millings in to cover the entire, almost eight acres of land?
They, they did to help clean up, yes.
They did help clean up.
And try to smooth that out.
Do you know how many tons they brought in?
I do not, sir.
That's it. We'll go to, I guess, the next public hearing then. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brown, if you can go ahead and tee us up for the next public hearing.
Okay, this is public hearing number seven for Sketch Platt 190002, Russ AL USA Inc., located in Commission District Number Three. This is a public hearing regarding Sketch Platt approval for Russ AL USA Inc. to operate a truck terminal in minor and major automobile service, services establishments associated with an office slash warehouse in an existing building. Multiple buildings, actually totaling 18,000 square feet on 6.68 acres of property that's currently zoned M1. The applicant's also requesting variances, three variances. The first is to reduce the zoning buffer along the eastern property boundary from 60 feet to zero. The second is to reduce the front setback from 50 feet to 35, abutting Union Hill Road right-of-way, adjacent to the existing structure only. And the third is to reduce the zoning setback from 75 feet to 65 feet along the eastern property boundary, again, adjacent to the existing structure only. The property is located on Union Hill Road.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, I have a quick question for Ken, just as to procedure. At the beginning of the meeting, we discussed that both of public hearing number six and seven would be brought back for decision only on 11/21, but I don't believe we took a vote on that. Before we open public hearing number seven, would it be appropriate for Commissioner, for, for someone at least, or Commissioner Levant, to make a motion to that effect? Or do, can we do them both at the end of seven?
We can do them at the end of seven.
Okay. Just want to make sure we don't get too far ahead of ourselves. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote. Hand that passes with a vote of five to zero, we're now open. If there's anyone who's here to speak in favor, I wonder who that might be, please come forward at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Ethan Underwood, again, Miles Hensford-Tallon, on behalf of Russell USA. Just to save time, we will incorporate all the statements made in the previous public hearing into this and try to address some of the concerns. If I could have our presentation put back up, though. I do want to emphasize, though, that the two-thirds of the property is not, on the eastern side, is not subject to any zoning condition. It is zoned M1. So we're not asking for removal of any restriction on transportation facilities on that. Our position is that property can be developed and used for any lawful use that was allowed under the code at the time it began, at the time the application was made. So with that, regarding Sketch Platt criteria, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my map or site plan. Regarding Sketch Platt criteria, our client satisfies, meets all requirements of the Unified Development Code. All utilities are within access of this property, and we assert that our client is entitled to the approval of the Sketch Platt. With that, again, our client does want to be a good neighbor. To address the comments that were made at the last public hearing, Union Hill absolutely was designed as an industrial road. McFarland Parkway was built and is used as an industrial road, and this portion of Union Hill down to James Road, to the signalized intersection, is a four-lane, medianized, industrially, or designed for industrial use right-of-way. We understand that there is a residential section further down Union Hill, and we will work with the neighbors and with the county in any way possible to make sure that drivers are not making a left-hand turn there. If, if we want to put no-through truck signs, our client has absolutely no objection to that. They want to make sure that they can drive down to James Road, make a left at the signalized intersection, which again is the safest location to do such. And then they'll be making a right closer to McFarland Road, away from anyone who's walking to the schools. Again, I think the map speaks for itself, this is a heavy industrial district. In fact, there is a truck terminal that's zoned pursuant to ZA 915, further to the south. It adjoins this property on the southern boundary, and it's actually closer to the residential uses. All we can say at this point is, why us? Why is this property being singled out when everyone else in that area is being allowed to use their property according to the code? With that, we'll reserve the remainder of our time, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? You, please, you can come forward. You don't need to show your hands, just bring your form down.
Good evening. So this is Vidhu again. So I'd like to discuss about the response from the issues we raised in the last public hearing. For example, the issue number three, neighbors express concern with the number of vehicles on the property and traffic that will be generated from land use. So the response is McFarland and Union Hill are four, four-lane roads now. Union Hill is a four-lane road now, but if you see the design, there is no free ride from Union Hill to McFarland. So that, if, if that will create a lot of problems if we have more than one truck, which is trying to get out from Union Hill to McFarland. So that says, the, the road, when, when we designed the road in 2016, the, the road was not designed for accommodating this many trucks or for a truck terminal over there. So it was there, we should, there should be a separate right line to McFarland, because it's not there. Also, when you see the Union Hill, McFarland intersection, there is only one left line from McFarland to Union Hill, so that's also not meant for too, too much truck traffic. And the response also says the number of trucks are only approximately 20 commercial truck trips per day. So if you see the actual application, SP 19002, there is, the proposed parking lots are 203. So there is a big discrepancy here, just for 20 trucks, why, per day, why there is a need of 203 parking lots. So the issue number four, neighbors express concern regarding the parking lighting, et cetera. The proposed number of, the response is the proposed number of trucks is appropriate for the property, and the applicant will comply with Forsyth County regulations. But if you see the application, the applicant is asking for variance from the regulation, from the county rules. So that's also a, some, a contradiction. And the issue number five, neighbors express concern regarding the safety of children walking to school. So even though, when you see the map here, the school is 1,500 feet from the truck terminal, so there is no way applicant can say that, oh, this truck terminal will not create any issues or any problems to kids. So I have two kids, so I, I am scared to send my kids when the 16-wheelers are running around. So you can feel, please feel the, our problems. And neighbors are incurred about regarding hours of operation. So even though there is an hours of operation, I don't know how county is going to enforce that. We like to know how commissioner is going to enforce the hours of operation or number of vehicles coming in and coming out from this property. And issue number seven, neighbors express concern regarding noise from the refrigerator trucks. If you go today, you can see more than half of the trucks are refrigerator trucks, which are constantly running there to keep the things inside that. So that will create noise pollution, that will create environmental pollution, and since the school is very, too, too much close to this, I think these pollutions will create problem for the kids. So we need to consider about our kids first, before considering any other business or anything in our community area. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
My name is Chignas, and I'm a president of Hanover Community. I would just like to make very short comments on this, is I understand that it could be an industrial park or whatever the park it is, we have the heavy industrial usage in all the areas around us, and the applicants would like to put a lot of trucks inside, whatever we call it, like the schooling zone, because within probably the one mile, we have the three school, it's not just about the one school. And I'll just come back on the same point again and again. If it's an industrial park, let's move the school somewhere else, I think, so we can have, we can provide our kids to a better and safe environment, they can walk to school. If you all just see in the morning, the kids are going from our community, walking, sharing the same pathway, and going there. And just to remind, I think, a lot of kids, when they're in the middle school and they're going to be in high school, they'll be crossing, using the same line, there will be a novice driver, I would say that, that'll be like, you know, getting the car, and they'll be crossing the McFarland on the Union Hill very heavily at the same time when the truck is there. And I don't think so, if there is like maybe a 160 trucks or maybe a 170 truck terminal is going to only fill out with maybe a 20 trucks a day, we could just provide you a lot of number for informations, we could provide you other, provide of evidence that it's not going to be just 20 or 30 trucks in that case. So I'll just rest in my point on one case only. It's maybe industrial area or anything, but the schools are there. If you would like to provide 160 storage space for the truck, let's move school somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor, excuse me, in opposition? Please come forward.
I'm Akash Badani, resident of Hanover Community, stay at 1225 Bitlock Cove. I'll tell you my story, what I went through in 2016, you know, with one of the trucks that hit my wife's car. In the afternoon, my wife was returning after picking my son from school, and as the gentleman talked about, that they will take all necessary precaution to avoid the drivers taking a left turn. One of the truck drivers crushed the front portion of my wife's car. When my one... One of the truck drivers crushed the front portion of my wife's car when my one-year-old daughter was in the car and my five-year-old son was in the car. And I was lucky enough that all of them were safe, car was completely crushed. And the driver did not have any regrets, the truck driver. We had the picture, police was there. The truck, half portion of the truck was on the other lane while taking the turn. And still, I had to really fight for six months to get my car fixed because they were not accepting it as a mistake. So I was lucky. Now we are talking about the kids who are going to cross the road. When they can't see a big vehicle, SUV, while taking a turn, what is the guarantee that they will not miss a kid while taking a turn when they are crossing and using the same walkways? So this is, this is my story and I'm sure we have so many families here, they all are worried with this truck terminal coming up here. And, you know, I hope, you know, it doesn't impact the residents staying in that community with what I went through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mahesh Mudleer. I stay at 1375 Vivalley Glen Drive. I'm a resident of Hanover Place as well, with my other neighbors. I moved here into the subdivision in 2010. It's been really a good place to raise our kids, been very happy with the neighborhood, especially with the fact that we have now the schools also in the walking distance, accessible from the subdivision, looking at a, a long-term plan here with, within our family to make this our home for the long, long duration of time. This terminal, I understand the predicament of the gentleman having bought the property and then with the long-term view of running it as a truck terminal. The issue that we have here is, the gentleman bought that piece of land from a nursing, I believe, nursery plant or tree business. The intent of that business was primarily to conduct, sell plants and trees maybe to large business homes or rather large subdivisions or large areas of where they were trying to go and, and conduct their business. But the, the nature of the business didn't warrant for there to be high-volume traffic in the neighborhood. If you were to jog back, looking at Union Hill, it was just a two-lane road earlier, in fact, undivided road. Now it's a four-lane road with a divider in between, but the issue here is with the truck terminals. The truck terminals are going to be operating 24 by 7, irrespective of the hours posted. It's a little way that you can go and really enforce, to the point that today you have some other units on the Union Hill which do have 18-wheelers coming in and going out. Of course, not at the same rate at what the truck terminal is going to be introducing. Even with those, as my neighbor pointed out, just making a turn onto McFarland causes a backup. Now if you look at the way the lanes are designed right now, there are four lanes, two of them to go straight on to continue on Union Hill, two to turn left onto McFarland, and the ones that are going straight on Union Hill, the extreme rightmost lane turns into McFarland. Imagining a truck backed up over there, waiting for the traffic to clear, creates hazards all the way down through the backups. That's one point. The other part, that is the traffic piece. The other piece that I mentioned around the operations part of it, it is definitely going to introduce noise. There is already lighting which is unsightly issue right now. If you were to look out in the nighttime, you would see bright floodlights over there at the facility. Coming in late at night, you do see traffic in and out of there. There's even the eerie issue of having trucks parked right next to a subdivision.
Okay, thank you. That's the end, end of our time. Mr. Underwood, did you want to use the remainder of your time? If you can reset the clock. I think it was a little over four minutes.
If I may state, I'll be honest, I'm not quite sure, the number 156 parking spaces came up, and I, the gentleman was correct, in the application that was filed, it was 200 parking spaces. It's, or, I'm sorry, 203. 79 truck spaces, plus I believe it was 108 driver and staff spaces. Some of that is for mechanics. There are folks that are down in the existing building that are working on vehicles. So we had to have parking, my client had to have parking for his mechanics who are not drivers. So my understanding is the request was for 203. Regarding the, really the only person I think I can address is the gentleman whose wife was hit by a truck. I, I'm very pleased to hear that no one was hurt in that. And unfortunately, I think what that did is that emphasized the need for that signalized intersection at James Road. Fortunately, that's been installed and we think that now there is a much safer situation at that location than there was. Again, thankfully, there was no, no one injured in that, but I, I hate that he had to go through that. With that, again, our client is more than willing to work with the county and with the neighbors to ensure that his drivers only go out McFarland and any additional recommendations for a, safety measures, short of going away. That's just not something that they can, they can do at this point. With respect, we are happy to meet with the commissioners, with the neighbors, and do anything else we can while we await your decision. Thank you.
All right. If there's no one else here to speak in favor, I will ask if anyone, if there's a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved to second.
We have a motion in second. Please vote. And we're now closed with a vote of five to zero, as we stated before. We're not going to be voting on the item this, this evening, but certainly if we want to have any discussion or, Mr. Levand, if you'd like to just go ahead and make a motion of when you want to see these back under old business.
I do have some questions for Counselor Wallace, fresh in our minds of some of the comments back and forth. Mr. Underwood, in your presentation, can we pull this presentation back up and see if it said 179 spaces in there? I may have misread it.
It, it may have been modified. We, we do modify the applications and frankly, this has been in the hopper for about nine months.
Okay. So you're telling me that you originally sent in an application, your original filing was for 203 spaces, 79 were for trucks, and 108 were for staff and other spaces for them to park their personal vehicles while they drive the truck throughout the day?
And our client frankly doesn't think they need that many parking spaces. We were just trying not to have to ask for another variance to reduce the parking.
How many parking spaces does your client think they need?
He's, I think he's got 20 employees and then if you had one space for every driver, you're looking at approximately, approximately 80. So 80, 160.
60 drivers and 20 employees?
Around 180.
Okay.
And, and that's honestly a maximum. I mean, he may be able to do more, we can certainly work on that. Because you're not going to have 79 trucks at all times filling every single spot. A lot of them, he's not making any money with a truck sitting on site. So the more he has on the road, the better he is.
Can we go back through your photos of the parking lot slowly? Have live photo, there you go. So just, just go slowly back up a little bit for me. All of these vehicles to the right along the fence in the front part, all those cars I see there, you tell me those are into the left, I see the ones to the left are probably employees by the building, but you tell me all, all of these other cars I'm seeing are truck drivers' vehicles parked there?
They are now. There were some older vehicles. And also what happens is when the car carriers come in, they will offload cars and then put them on another carrier. I've been there and seen some old beat-up cars and I've also seen $150,000 Porsches sitting right next to it, so it really depends on what's being shipped.
Okay. And can you roll through some more of those lot pictures? Lot of trucks, no cars, that means the trucks are parked there, they've gotten in their vehicle and they've gone home or wherever. Would that be your assumption?
Well, what, what we've tried to do, again, this photo is showing the east side of the property. And so what we've tried to do in accordance with the sketch plat and the existing zoning condition is put the trucks on the east side of the property, put the drivers' cars on the west side of the property. So this, this photo does not show the, it's only showing one side of the property.
Just roll, just roll through the parking lot some more if you can.
These were just videos of.
Those individual vehicles parked there in the back, on the right side and on the left, those are, I guess, I'm assuming, drivers' vehicles?
That could be, yes, sir.
Okay, keep rolling. Once again, all those, most of those vehicles, you consider those truck drivers' vehicles? They parked them for the day or a week or whatever it is while they're off in the truck?
Yes. Or, or they may be staff. Again, he's got mechanics that are on site that are keeping the trucks rolling.
And they don't put the mechanic's cars next to the mechanic shop?
Some are, some are not.
Okay.
So that's, that's something, if, if we need to regiment exactly the parking uses...
I'm just trying to figure out what all's in the parking lot.
Sure.
You got another shop? And you got a RV there, what is that? Am I living on the property?
I'm not aware of anyone living on the property, sir.
Keep going. All right. So I see your photos and I've seen lots of other photos. Would you say that your photos were more like a Disney version?
No, sir. My photos, I, I went and got breakfast at the diner on McFarland and hopped out and took pictures.
And you didn't tell them you were coming?
Nope. It was on a Saturday morning at about 8:30.
Okay. So just for the public to know this, we've heard a lot of your comments and y'all have to understand that the Board of Commissioners is not always a sole decision-maker. We, if we get it wrong, he has a right to file in the court system and the courts will decide whether to remand it back to us, what they might call a constitutional zoning, which means it's about land rights. All of y'all's comments may not have all fallen on those ears of land rights, just know that. So when you do your research for great reasons why something shouldn't happen, go do your research on land rights and see if anything sticks there for you as well. I mean, that's just what you have to do, so.
Todd, can I make one comment before you do that? I just have been looking up the old zonings and the old properties and I think there's a real lesson. The lady back there made me want to look when you kept saying, you know, about it being the change in the, what, from being industrial or from being that to being the bedroom community or being a place where people live. And we as a board, I have put an enormous amount of money into the chamber to attract more businesses here because our tax digest is out of whack. It's too much on the bedroom side and we're needing to, to draw in more commercial. And I think there's a great lesson that we can all learn in this, even though the zoning of one of your communities, probably where most of you live, was done in 2005. It was done by Mr. Underwood, or from Emery Lipscomb's office, and part of it was an M1, did you say M1? That changed to the residential community you live in now. And it says to me that we as a Board of Commissioners should be more careful, that we, we didn't do it, it was 2005, but there's a lesson you can always learn from people before. I mean, that commercial industrial areas, we will hear attorneys come before us demanding that they be changed, that the property owner has the right to sell their property for their highest and best use, which lots of times, especially when you're getting 9,000 square foot lots that all of you live on, is a real high and best use. And I just think that we, if we want to protect commercial, that is, for our tax digest in the future, we need to be really careful that we let land change to be in, to residential. Because once it changed to be residential, those people are just like y'all, you have your property rights, you demand, you don't want trucks on your road, on your road, it's not just your road, but you don't want businesses on your road, you don't want commercial to impact your road. And then that puts us in the quandary of, okay, well, if we listen to just the people that are now living there, then how are we ever going to get our tax digest straightened out? And it's, we're, lots of times we've inherited decisions that were made 2005, long time ago, but yet we have these, these complex issues before us because everybody does have property rights and they all have them within, Georgia provides that, we're a property rights state, and it's about balance and trying to balance that. And at the same time, trying to balance our tax digest, so you're not all screaming and yelling at us when your taxes go up too.
Well, I think none of us were here on the board at that time, but it would be interesting to go back and look at the arguments that were made at that time, to take something that was a, a M1 zoning and what the argument was, making the demand to convert it to residential because that did speak to at least that property owner or that, their, their representation's belief that that was the trajectory, that it should be residential. And so we have to consider that as well. And again, it comes back to balance and making sure that we're making decisions that, with a purpose that looks at our comp plan and what the future of this community should look like, but.
Yep. So I guess we, we got a ton on our calendar, if you don't mind, I'd like to finish up and make a motion so we can go to...
Please do. And remember, we have to, we have to address number six and seven.
Yep, got it. So in closing to all that, there's still a condition on this piece of land, a part of this land, that didn't want certain things that might be ugly in the future, and y'all read it, it was up there for a long time, that condition one. And, and that is the handshake of the public when zonings go down. And they're asking to have that removed as well, keep that in mind. Now, I will confer with our legal counsel because this is going to be a sticking, sticky zoning, and I'm going to lean on very heavily to decide what we can do and what we can't do, just know that. So with that, I make a motion that we postpone item, public hearing number six and number seven to November 21st for a decision.
Second. Do you want to, just as clarification before we vote on that, you mentioned it as public hearing, do you want to clarify that it will actually come, it was a public hearing, should it come back as old business?
It'll come back as old business, but that's normally standard, I don't, I don't have to...
Yeah, because we'd have to move it out if it was going to be another public hearing. Are you okay with that?
No, no, we're not doing another public hearing.
Right, right, but you didn't say old business, so I'll clarify.
But I, but I will tell everybody in the crowd, if you want to speak again, 5 and usually around 6:30, there's two opportunities, so.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention to...
Yes, sir.
The Commissioner, and, and yes, he's already let me know that he wants to work very closely with me in looking at this one, and we will be doing that. And I agree, I know, I understand it's coming back as old business. I will advise you, Commissioner, whether I think anything else other than that needs to occur.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have an active motion and a second, please vote. And we'll be seeing this again as old business on the 21st. Both of those items. Public hearing number eight was postponed until December the 5th. Post, uh, public hearing number nine.
SP 190005, the applicant is Georgia Stone Products LLC. This is located in Commission District Number Four. It's a public hearing regarding sketch plat approval for Georgia Stone Products LLC to expand an existing extraction industry and build a cement plant, ready-mix concrete, and a 1,260 square foot office. They need to operate an existing 2,000 square foot office with a 528 square foot storage shed, all on 107.814 acres of property. It's currently zoned M2. The applicant's also requesting two variances. The first, reduce the zoning setback along the northern property boundary from 90 feet to zero. And the second, reduce the zoning buffer along the northern property boundary from 75 feet to zero. The property is located on Leland Drive.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come ahead.
Second. Please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. If you're here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ethan Underwood, Miles Hands for Talent. On a happier note, we are, have worked a good bit on this project and we hope that the board will approve the sketch plat. This is an act, it is an active aggregate mine. It's very, it's in a highly industrial area. Again, this property is zoned M2, approximately 107 acres. This has all been a learning experience for everybody because it's been a little while since I think mining has been, gone through the zoning analysis in Forsyth County. But what our folks are here asking for, what triggered this, was a ready-mix concrete plant. And what a ready, ready-mix concrete plant would do is, is gravel, sand that is mined on the property and cement are mixed together and it goes into trucks and it goes out to various construction sites. This will actually be a very good business and it is surprisingly clean because the biggest issue, I think what we learned was there's a, it's a big difference between cement and concrete. Cement is not manufactured on this site. That's a fairly intense use. Under Georgia regulations, it's considered similar, but you're not doing the cooking and the pulverizing of the limestone that would create a problem. So again, this is simply for a ready-mix concrete plant. The sketch plat is presented here. Now, if, if I may, the zoning board of appeals on Tuesday night actually approved variances. We had, for, for various reasons, we had some concurrent applications going forward. They approved the variances along the northern side, so I don't know that we need to go through that again. But I will leave that to the staff because I know we're here only for discussion only and not for decision. But with that... But with that, here's a zoom in showing the location of the concrete plant, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
And this was a zoning that was done in?
It was zoned actually via litigation probably 15 years ago. It was operated as a non-conforming use before Forsyth County got zoning in 1974. It continued to operate and a mining permit has been maintained on the site continuously. There was a discontinuation, I believe, from 2012, 2017 of the actual extraction of minerals from the property, but the mining permit stayed in place, so it has continued on as a non-conforming use. The property was zoned in, I believe, roughly 15 years ago, as an M2 zoning. And this isn't allowed use pursuant to this existing zoning, but it says if you're gonna do a concrete plant, you have to go through the sketch plat process. So, it has gone through a DRI, Development of Regional Impact, through the Georgia Mountains Regional Commission. They've issued their opinion and it is, they have no opposition to this and we are hopeful that the board will approve it. I know we have been working a good bit with the neighbors, I guess I ought to not just gloss over that. In particular, what came up with the ZBA and with the neighbors on Cantrell Circle is, they wanted to make sure that we understood and agreed in a public setting that Cantrell Circle is not an appropriate industrial road. So we have submitted to Commissioner Mills, and we're still working out the finer details of conditions as to buffers, noise abatement, just trying to be good neighbors. But one of those is specifically stating that no mining or customer traffic will be on Cantrell Circle, and we'll continue to work to iron out those details before the
No truck traffic.
Correct, correct.
And it's a bit unusual, wouldn't you say, to have a zoning for a mine and also have within the conditions of that zoning, the allowance for a ready-mixed plant?
Correct.
I mean, that's a separate business, but it's still within the same.
Correct.
It was part of a compromise, ZA 3546 was actually zoned in 2010. And of course, it was that zoning that then triggered the litigation that resulted in the Mashburn Track zoning, but it was for a green industrial campus. And that's, that's what's got us here today with those, that set of conditions.
Before we get too deep in discussion, we're still in public hearing, so if you have more to your presentation.
No, we'll remain, we'll reserve the remainder of our time for the bottom.
Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
If a motion is second, please vote. We're now closed, and now the discussion can begin. Commissioner Mills, you've lived and breathed this.
Yeah, and we have had umpteen zillion meetings on it. Ken's been heavily involved in it. Some of you commissioners have been part of separate meetings that we've had, because it's been going on for two years. We are really close to having everything nailed down on the conditions. There's a few more things we're wanting to work out, just some tweaking of some of the conditions. The good news to me for the property owners that have lived next to, that live on Cantrell Circle, I know a lot of these folks and we've met, we've had a public participation meeting with this that I went to, we've had meetings here. They've never had any conditions before. I mean, they've been living next to a sand mine all this time and they've never had the luxury of having planted buffers or a fence, or any of things that become so, or anything to do with noise abatement or, right now, they've already, Georgia Stone has already instigated like we have at the Rock Quarry here in town, where they do calls, they let them know before they blast, they are having an email system and doing all the things we've learned from some of the other places, and they are, they've never had that before. So, these, these conditions are really more about the sand mine operation, but since it's not in for a zoning, we've, because they are in for something that was a part of it, we've been able to get them a lot of the things they've been wanting for a long time. So for that, I'm thankful.
Did you want to offer a motion as to when you'd like to see this come back? I don't think we handled that earlier.
We had discussed it coming back in two weeks.
Okay.
The 21st. So, and we're gonna have a meeting with them to iron out all the, the rest of the conditions. So, I make a motion that we postpone the vote until November 21st.
Second.
And that will come back as old business?
Yes.
They have a motion, second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero to hear this for decision only on the 21st. Public hearing number 10.
VA 190044, located in Commission District Number Four. It's a public hearing for a county-initiated request regarding a variance of 134 feet to allow the minimum lot width to be 16 feet rather than the required 150 feet. The property is located on Millwood Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
A motion is second, please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. If you're here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
Good evening, I'm Nathan McClure, McClure Surveying, representing Ricky Smith, applicant. What we're looking to achieve, it's an existing parcel, we're not creating a non-conforming parcel, we're actually trying to bring an old family split from the 1970s into compliance. Property was created in 1978. There was a plat prepared at that time, but it was, it was never approved and recorded. So, may I have to answer any questions you have?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
We have a motion, second, please vote. Motion passes with a vote of five to zero, we're now closed. Commissioner Mills?
Nathan, this is just so they can be able to build their family home.
It is. Mr. Ricky Smith already lives on the property, he just wanted to cut out an acre, which we, we could not do, because this plat was never approved and recorded. Once this is approved and recorded, the new subdivision will be in compliance with all current UDC regulations. But because the, the property narrowed to such a point back in 78.
It didn't matter.
You know, it was all within family and no one was concerned about it, so.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from board members? Commissioner Mills, are you, would you make a motion or you have further questions?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request of variance to the UDC Table 15.2, Parcel 281-034, as, VA 190044, as shown and presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Item number 11 was postponed until the 21st. And item number 12, Mr. Brown?
AZ 190023, this is in Commission District Number Five. This is a public hearing for Animal Medical Center of Coming, Inc., regarding the amendment of Condition Number Two and the deletion of Condition Number One placed on zoning application 1663. The applicant's also requesting a variance to reduce the zoning buffer from 40 feet to zero feet adjacent to parcel 174043.
Thank you. And as we stated earlier in the meeting, we're going to be postponing our decision until our next meeting on the 21st, coming back as old business. And this is related to two other items, including the following item on this agenda and an item that's coming up on the 21st. Without, without further ado, is, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
A motion is second, please vote. We are now open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who's here to speak in favor, please come forward.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Sean Courtney with Lipscomb Johnson, 112 North Main Street in Coming. On behalf of Animal Medical Center of Coming. Just gonna wait for the PowerPoint.
They got George Butler's name on this, what'd you do to him?
Here we go. So this is, like Chairman Smotson said, is in connection with the next item and a conditional use permit. There's two different zonings on the facility. This one is about an acre. This is what, it's an existing facility, what it looks like from the outside, been operating for about 20 years. Definitely an asset to the community, gotten many letters of support. We had a planning commission meeting for the conditional use permit, had about 20 people in support, no one speaking against. You may have with you the, the letter from the Ivy Walk HOA, said he's never had a complaint about this, this facility. Unfortunately, he was unable to make it, as was Taylor Davis, who sent you an email as well. It's located on Highway 20 at Hall Creek Circle East. You can see on the east side is, is this application. This is the site plan of the existing facility, and this is honestly just a case of, of coming into current compliance. They're requesting to modify two conditions to allow a kennel to be, a kennel without outdoor facilities. The kennel's inside, but there's fenced areas. And the second condition, so that the dogs in the fenced areas do not have to be on a leash. There are two, there's a variance request with this as well as the other application, just, I'd call them come into compliance variance requests to keep the existing building and the existing fencing as it is. Dr. Mike McLaughlin is here, he'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll explain with the next public hearing about the other zoning condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Mike McLaughlin. I've been in Forsyth County for 25 years. I came here in 1995, rented a little small facility back right at Exit 14 originally. When I came here, it was the Waffle House, the racetrack gas station to me. That was it, okay. I bought the existing property, it was already zoned for special use. Another group of veterinarians had bought it and their financing or something had fallen apart. I was able to buy it, it was already zoned, it already had the special use on it. I assumed it had everything that I needed. It was zoned probably in the late 80s, early 90s. I moved into it in 2000. We've been operating in that facility since 2000, and really, what we're trying to do here is just be a good citizen and come into compliance. We didn't realize we were out of compliance. We were able to buy another small piece of property, when Highway 20 was expanded, they cut a Hall Creek Connector in right beside me. There was a small piece of property there that was approximately .7 acres, that was so narrow that it would've been difficult for anybody else to commercially develop it. I wanted it, they wanted to sell it. We came to an agreement and we were able to fold them together. We're trying to get a blanket zoning on all of it, so instead of having two different properties with two different zonings, we have one that has one consistent conditional use permit. At the planning meeting, we had a huge turnout of my clients, and it was unbelievably heartwarming to me. How many of my people, when they found out that something might be going on to affect me and my organization, they, they poured in. There's no doubt about that. I had an opportunity to speak with Jim Ruska, who is the president of Ivy Walk Subdivision directly behind me. He sent the email. He said he's been HOA president there for 18 years. He gets complaints every day about everything. Never one time about me, never. Taylor Davis, I'm sure you got his email. He's an incredible young man that has, uses our facility. I really didn't realize really what was going on with him. He had a big, high-energy dog, he got called up, had to go to Afghanistan, left his dog with his mom, asked her if she'd take care of it while he was gone. What are you gonna say? Sure, absolutely. We didn't even know what was going on there, but we knew that we were taking pictures and sending it home and that, putting the dog on Facebook, and when he comes back home, he brought me a flag. It's unbelievable. I mean, it choked me up. Not gonna get you. So, bottom line is, I'm just trying to be a good citizen, okay? I wanna be a pillar of this community. I wanna provide a service that obviously is in demand and is needed here, and I'm just asking for your support. Anything I can do to, to make this right, that's what I wanna do. That, that's why I'm here. So, if, anybody have any questions for me? If not, thank you guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Monica Solizik and I am resident of Ivy Walk Subdivision, recently elected to the Board of Directors for the HOA. I am also Vice President at the Atlanta Humane Society and have worked in animal welfare for the past 25 years. In 2014, I had a unique opportunity to transfer across the United States to come to Georgia and work for the Atlanta Humane Society. And as I went around looking for my new home, and home for my five dogs, one of the things that really caught my attention near Ivy Walk was the proximity of Animal Medical Center and the fact that not only was it a large, well-kept veterinary hospital, but it also included the boarding facility, because I do need to travel for my job and my dogs do spend a considerable amount of time with who we call Uncle Mike. They're pretty regular there, I'm pretty sure I'm putting his daughter through college with my bills, but I think what's more important to realize is that I'm not alone in this. As animals have become more and more of a part of the fabric of our families and of our lives, we have come to expect as consumers and demand as citizens that we have the services that we need for our animals too. And Dr. Mike and his team and Animal Medical Center provides that service to the city of Coming and to Forsyth County. In the United States, we currently spend over $77 billion annually on animal care of different types, of which over 11 million is for veterinary care and 6 billion is for boarding services. That's a lot of money, and as was stated earlier, looking at tax bases and revenue sources for the county, that provides an essential part of our economy here in Forsyth County. And it's one that I think should be allowed to continue unrestricted without all of the restrictions that are currently on that property. It is not feasible for a boarding kennel to take dogs out on a leash, one by one, you know, at any point in time. That's not what I do with my own dogs at home and it's not what I expect when I take my dog to a kennel. So I just ask that this board give strong consideration to what Animal Medical Center means to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. And we're closed with a vote of five to zero. And as we are, have already determined that we're going to allow this to catch up with the cup, and we're moving this to old business on the 21st, we'll just keep rolling and move into, well, let's go ahead and talk about the conditions, go ahead and come forward. Well, you, you already mentioned them, they're fairly, fairly basic. Are there any questions that the Commissioners may have with regard to what's being requested here for the zoning condition amendments? There's not? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we put this to come back as old business on November the 21st for decision.
I will say that my planning commissioner told me that they could not get over how many people came in support, because it's hard to get people, it's real easy to get people to come when they're against something, it is real difficult. It is real difficult to get them to come when they're for. And I think that's a real testament to your, to the job y'all do.
Madam Chair, why are we postponing and not making decision tonight?
Because they have a cup that they requested that everything be heard and, and, at the same time, they have a conditional use permit coming up in two weeks.
Is that cup state puppies for everyone?
I don't think so, but we're still working on conditions, so you never know. We do have an active motion, a second. It was to bring this back as old business in two weeks. Please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. And on to number 13, Mr. Brown, if you can please set us up.
AZ 190027, Commission District Number Five, Public Hearing for Animal Medical Center of Coming, Inc., regarding the amendment of condition number two placed on zoning application 1967. The applicant's also requesting a variance to reduce the zoning buffer from 40 feet to zero feet adjacent to parcel 174043.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
A motion is second, please vote. And we're open. Sean, if you'd like to go ahead and give your presentation?
Sure. I'll be very brief with this. This is, Dr. Mike was talking about him buying some property there on Hall Creek Circle. So this is another zoning that was actually part of the zoning with that retail center where Q BBQ is. We're just asking to amend the condition to allow our fence to remain as it is. And it's right there at Hall Creek Circle is the, is where that zoning is. And there was a condition that required a 40-foot buffer, and we've asked that it be nine feet to accommodate our fence there. I'll be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor?
Seriously? How do you refuse that?
Is there, is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? And is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Oh my goodness.
And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Yeah, this is kind of where we get into assembling all the pieces and parts. And one of the things you guys might have noticed when he mentioned that this was originally zoned as part of the same shopping center that Q is, and it is now separated by a road. So it did really leave an orphaned parcel that they're able to make some use out of. And so hopefully, we can find a way to make this work. Are there any questions from the board members of what was presented this evening? No? Okay, any questions about the buffer reductions or side neighbors or anything along that lines? All right. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we bring this back as old business in two weeks.
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. And we will bring that one back in two weeks as well, and hear them all together under old business. Well, not the cup, but those items. Item number 14.
AZ 190026, located in Commission District Number Five. This is a public hearing for Mike Klein regarding the amendment of condition number seven placed on zoning application 2147.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Commissioner Mills?
I'm sorry. I was being talked to.
I saw that. Go ahead and slap your button for me, please. Thank you very much. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. I was just gonna open it without you. If there's anyone who's here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
Wendy Schneider with Build Your Own Pool. On behalf of Dr. Mike Klein, we're requesting a rear variance to the 25-foot building setback line to allow it to be five feet for the purpose of installing a backyard pool.
Thank you. Do you have any further comments? Just want to wait till we get into discussion?
That's just the only space available for a pool on this yard.
Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion.
A motion, and I'll put one of y'all down as a second. How about that? Please vote. And we're closed with a vote of five to zero. So, do you have letters from all of your adjoining neighbors? And you've worked with your, this is in Windermere, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you've gotten approval from the HOA?
The HOA has changed management, so we've just had nothing from them. We wouldn't do anything without approval, of course.
Okay. Yeah, they'll come get you worse than we will.
Yeah, they're just very behind in there right now, I'm noticing, on other jobs.
And you have, you have all of your adjoining neighbors?
I have seven. Everyone who touches, and then behind is an open space.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I'm ready for a motion unless any of my colleagues have a question. I'd like to make a motion that we approve AZ 190026 as it pertains to parcel 203029.
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Do you need the letters? Yes, please. If you can hand them over to the clerk, that would be great. Item number 15.
AZ 190029, located in Commission District Number Five. This is a public hearing for Strike One Properties LLC regarding amending the existing master plan district zoning in accordance with a new master plan book filed here within. The applicant is also requesting the amendment of conditions number four and eight placed on zoning application 3316.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Someone.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. Mr. Courtney, I believe you're here to speak in favor. It's the Sean Courtney Show tonight.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Sean Courtney of Lipscomb Johnson. On behalf of Strike One Properties, they operate as The Little House Learning Center. It's a daycare. And this is in an existing MPD on Windermere. And we're proposing to change the MPD book to add in daycare center as a permitted use and revise a couple of the conditions. You can see where it starred is the location there on Windermere. This is the proposed site plan. We're proposing a building of a little over 11,000 square feet, which will affect the conditions we talked about, and also where the parking is. There's parking at the street corner. This is the commercial land use standards, and so we're just adding daycare center to the permitted use. We're asking condition number four to be changed. Condition four said that you could have a maximum of 10,000 square feet unless you were, and it named a couple of tax parcels. It's our belief that one of those tax parcels at one time did consist of where our property is. But just to make sure, we want to add that in. We're a little over 11,000. The next condition, that surface parking lots shall be oriented behind or to the side of the building when possible. Here, it's a daycare center. Just the safety aspect, you want to have your playground area behind the building and not right there on Windermere Parkway. And so we've put our parking there. And finally, Chairman Summerson has requested that it be site plan specific, so we added a condition like that as well. And then, and actually, I think that is meant to be condition 23. Yeah.
It is.
23. Yeah, it should be 23. The, the last thing, it came to our attention from, from the engineer, actually, that condition number 21 that was done with AZ 1510, it was a completely different project within this MPD. It didn't specify that those requirements applied to that. And I discussed that with staff, and just as a clarification for this application and also future applications, we just request that, that language be clarified. I'm here with Francisco Puerta and Doris Romero with The Little House Learning Center. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. If either of you would like to come forward and speak on your own behalf, you are welcome to do that at this time.
Commissioners, my name is Francisco Puerta. We are the couple that intend to build a daycare center on this location. We opened our first location in 2015 in Morita, Georgia. Currently, we serve over 100 families on Austell Road. And we believe our education model and on our business structure will be a great fit for this community. Hopefully, we'll get your approval to move forward with our project and be part of the community. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to come forward and speak in favor at this time, please do so. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. We're now closed with a vote of five to zero. Sean, when we were going through this, were there not a couple of, of old zoning conditions that pertain to the residential development? I thought it was 21, 2021 and 22.
There was.
And I don't have them in front of me right now, but it seems like we went through a couple of those and resolved that we would have the site plan tied in as 23 to kind of tie together the intent.
Would you like a copy of the conditions?
Do you, I'll have them.
Of the, of the old?
Of the old ones, yes, please. That would be great. Because I think we were looking at a couple of others that were...
I believe it starts at...
Yeah, because 20, if you look at 20 and 21, they speak to the residential area as well, I guess.
And 22 as well.
Right. Tom, do you have those in front of you? I can hand you these if you'd like to see them, or we can throw them up on the, up on the screen, if that's helpful.
Let's put them on the screen. I have them in the file, it'd be quicker than digging them out.
Because some of these, we just want to make sure that the intent, that those were reserved for the residential portions, which actually on that side of the road won't be built out, that they're not, when it comes before staff, that that doesn't become an issue. Because if it does, we'll just exempt them from those, that parcel from those conditions as well. And I'm looking at 20 through 22. And then we've added, of course, the condition that ties it to the site plan to kind of I just want to make sure you don't have any concerns that I, any of those three would create an issue of not being clear.
Sean has just passed me an email from Carol Williams on my staff.
Right.
And she's indicated that she thinks it would be, she'd researched it and thought it would be valuable to add that clarification.
It would be, okay.
This property in particular has had a long history of...
Slicing and dicing.
Subdivide, slicing and dicing, changing hands, reconfiguration, you name it. So I think it'd be a good time to make sure we've added as much clarity as we can.
Okay. So, I have a question for Ken. Ken, does it concern you that for me to make additional modifications to existing conditions that I would need to have another public hearing?
It doesn't.
Okay, good.
The UDC contemplates that when we have to modify conditions, that...
Other conditions might come into play.
Other conditions might necessarily need to be modified as a byproduct of that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, and your parcel number is 177559.
That's correct.
So if, bear with me over there, our clerk, because I'm going to need to capture some of the language that you see on this screen when I make my motion. Are there any questions from the board of Commissioners? There's not, okay. I'd like to make a motion that is to approve the zoning condition amendment, where's our number here? Actually, I'm sorry, it's a change to the master plan district zoning and amend the zoning conditions to ZA 3316, because this went by a book, to the conditions that were, can you throw the previous conditions back up there again? The condition changes to number four, eight, 21, and 23 as displayed. And if you can bring back those old conditions we just had a moment ago. Further, I'd like to amend condition number 20, 21, and 22 to exempt parcel 177559. Ken, are you satisfied that's clear, clear enough?
I am.
Thank you. That's my motion.
Reckon.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Public hearing number 16.
Good evening, Commissioners. So just to clarify, at the last public hearing for this agenda, agenda item on October 3rd, the first few topics listed under number 16 were approved by the board. Staff was directed to take a deeper look at truck terminals, contractors, establishment, and transportation use, utility facility portion. So that is what I'll be speaking on this evening. So as you recall, the concerns here are truck terminals, truck parking, and the storage of trucks. And to address this in chapter 14, we have made truck terminals a conditional use in all zonings. Also in this chapter, we are proposing a change to transportation utility facility except truck terminals, and that is from permitted to M, from permitted in M2 to conditional. And this is in an effort to align sections of the UDC. Section 16 dash 4.31 reads that these facilities are permitted only as conditional uses because of various off-site impacts that may result. However, as you can see, we do have one permitted in the use table. So again, this change will align these sections. So moving forward, we are proposing contractors establishments change from permitted to conditional in HB and HC. And whereas previously, our proposed draft included a change from permitted to conditional in all industrial zonings as well, tonight's draft rather includes a change to the contractor's establishment definition. So we've removed storage of material and included that any outside storage constitutes an open storage yard and shall be subject to those regulations. So open storage yard allows parking of vehicles in excess of 96 hours, but is only permitted with a cup.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. If there's anyone who's here to speak in favor of these changes, please come forward at this time. I'm seeing none. If there's anyone who's here to speak in opposition to these changes, please come Again, there do not seem to be any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. And we are closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioners, any discussion on this item? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I have one question from staff. The outside storage will also apply to the HB, you said? And, can you scroll back to the chart, top chart? There you go. Transportation, okay. In the top of those note lines, let's go to the very top of that chart. Okay, got you. All right, thank you. You have one more chart. You can just show me the very top of the next chart. So you're going to be getting into HB and HC, contractors establishments. Tell me how you think that'll change, make that a little different from what's today and the way that they can use their, I guess, their commercial site.
Well, we have...
Well, we have, today they're allowed as a permitted use. So you're not going to see them in those highway business and heavy commercial zoning districts. And that's the way they've been in the code for some time now. When we started off this entire effort, the general direction I heard was concerned about truck-related uses and looking to bring more of those uses before the Board of Commissioners and require a conditional use permit. So it's doing just that in the districts where even historically, we've allowed those uses by right. They're now requiring a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Tom, just one quick question on the parking of vehicles, like, we've got coming up and it's been postponed for the last two months, the Red Oak, and them parking their vehicles in, they're on 400. And they are arguing that that is not open storage, the parking of their vehicles.
Right. And it can be for some uses, and that one in particular, I think it can be a fine line between what's a parking lot, a display area, and a storage area. We hit before in this meeting tonight about, we do have a definition that identifies what something is there for 96 hours or longer, it gets flagged as storage, for vehicles in particular. So if that, I'm not familiar with everything in that Red Oak application off the top of my head. If they have their vehicles moving in and out, typically, or almost always more frequently than that 96-hour threshold, they would have a good argument that they're not storage.
Would there be an element of judgment there with respect to what's the primary use versus what's just an auxiliary use and conducting that primary use as business?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a meeting coming up, so.
We do, yes.
Well, I'm sure we'll figure it out.
So the business before, I noticed that on here, we do have some additional recommendations from the Planning Commission. Would that be something we will need to reference in any motion to capture those in addition to what was presented? Or have you captured those recommendations? I guess that would be something to just future work items.
We don't think we have, could you?
Yeah, so there's a notice on here, it looks like it might be some future modifications that they're looking for. But it says that they recommend approval of the UDC modifications related to short terminals, automobiles, all the categories, with a request that separate definitions and use permissions are considered for repair of watercraft and other recreational vehicles such as golf carts, all trade. As we discussed earlier when we were making the...
That was the, we bundled a large group of work together. Your last, the last time we had it in front of this group, you approved the majority of it.
Right.
And it's my understanding that the Planning Commission's recommendations were on the part you have already approved, not almost before you tonight.
Okay.
I concur, that's right.
Thank you.
And things are grandfathered, if we start getting calls, you know, about large corporations or people that have, they're grandfathered until there is a change.
Anyone who's there legally, yes, it's going to be a nonconformity and allowed to remain. You will potentially see applications in the future where there is, if there is a contractor's establishment in HB and the use ends, and we just recently extended that timeframe. We did a significant extension to it, but if it exceeds that timeframe, they could have to come back to you to ask for a conditional use permit.
That's good to know. I have one.
That's why we extended that lapse of...
Emerys, you attorneys need to let your clients know.
Are there any further comments or questions? Would anyone like to offer a motion? If not, I'll take a stab at it. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the UDC modifications as presented. We have a motion as second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. We have withdrawn number 17 for redundancy with the prior item. Item number 18. Heather Ryan.
Okay. Staff received direction at the May 21st work session to review conservation subdivision open space requirements as part of a potential two-phased approach to revising the chapter. Staff direction at this time has to work within the framework of open space only, I just want to reiterate. Performance standards otherwise have not been altered as a part of these proposed amendments. So we understood from the May 21st discussion that there's a desire to preserve more open space types that would not otherwise be protected through additional county and state regulations. So tonight's presentation will address this concern through three key components. The draft redefines primary and secondary conservation types. It increases the minimum required amount of secondary conservation and provides an incentive structure to encourage more secondary conservation. Okay, so to review our current standards, our RSLs, they're on the left-hand side. There's an overall open space requirement for all conservation subdivisions, that's a total of 40%. And that 40% is typically comprised of two types, and that's primary conservation area and secondary conservation area. So what would count as primary conservation areas are generally the most environmentally sensitive areas as well as the most difficult areas to build upon. So currently, under our code, that which would qualify to be counted toward primary conservation are those land types listed to the top left. So these land types are often protected by other county and state regulations. So what would qualify as secondary conservation areas are typically less environmentally constrained areas, but that which may be desirable to preserve because of ecological, aesthetic, historic, or cultural values. So this first side provides a comparison of our current types of conservation and that which we are proposing. So many of today's types remain with a few new types added, and those include supplementary trails and trailheads, specimen tree stand areas, and we've added qualifying minimum contiguous acreage for open land such as meadows and pastures, as well as existing forest. So we've also adjusted percentage requirements. And here, we're maintaining our current total overall required amount of open space at 40%. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, yeah. At 40%, however, we're bumping up the minimum secondary conservation requirement from 15 to 30%. So currently, secondary conservation must equal at least 15% of whatever is provided for primary conservation. So with this draft, that number will increase to 30%. So the effect here will be realized should primary conservation types be used to satisfy most or all of the total open space requirement. So in other words, those areas that would otherwise be protected anyway cannot be used to comprise all of the total 40% without incurring an increase in the minimum amount of secondary conservation required as well. We're doubling that requirement. Okay, so this very, oh, wait a minute, wrong side. This very simple graphic will illustrate this. So these squares are representative of 100-acre properties. Since we're working with 100 acres, acreage and percentage are synonymous in this example. So this, this might be a rather constrained lot with 35 acres of primary type land. That might be wetland, floodplain, steep slopes, something like that. So here, nearly all of the 40% required open space is comprised of the primary type. So we've given it 35 acres. So, let's see, under our current code, secondary conservation must equal at least 15% of primary conservation. So we would get 5.25 acres. So under the proposed changes, secondary must equal 30% of primary. So we would get 10.5 acres, so you can see the difference there. Then we subtract out 22% right-of-way, and this is simply the number suggested at the work session. So we've retained that number for right-of-way. And in this case, there would be slightly less acreage remaining for development. So you can see, because they've incurred that additional bump, there's a little bit less remaining for development. Okay. So additionally, we've provided an incentive model from another jurisdiction. As some of what we have heard is that this is a zoning that is not, has not often been sought. So once again, our total open space requirement is 40%. But should that total open space provided be comprised of at least half secondary types, then we'll drop that overall requirement from 40% down to 30%. So again, we have the graphic to illustrate. Similarly, in this graphic, we have a 100-acre property, I keep pointing this in the wrong direction. Okay. And in this case, 15 acres of what might be considered primary conservation. So in our current code, 25, okay. 25 acres of secondary would have to be provided to reach the 40% total open space requirement. The proposed incentive would require at least half of the open space provided be comprised of secondary conservation type to receive a 10% decrease in the overall open space amount required. So again, if we subtract the right-of-way, you can see there is more area left for development if the incentive is pursued. So there's 38 acres versus 48 acres in this particular example. So it's possible that we could receive less total open space. However, this example shows that taking advantage of this incentive could theoretically make a rez-two conservation zoning viable as well as solidify a minimum amount of the desired types of conservation that must be provided, which would be the secondary. Of course, this is with the understanding that, you know, every property will differ, and only the yield plan will determine the number of possible lots. And it is important to note that, for this example, a non-conservation rez-two zoning does not have a minimum open space requirement at all. So again, we have our current UDC versus the proposed. The text in red indicates the Planning Commission's recommendation. So they recommended 60% rather than 50% secondary conservation must be provided in order to receive the 10% reduction incentive. And the exterior buffers cannot count toward the secondary open space. And existing forests must be at least three rather than one contiguous acre to count toward secondary conservation. And that's all I have.
Good job.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? We have a motion as second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of four to zero with Commissioner Levitt out of the room. If you're here to speak in favor of these changes to our conservation requirements, please come forward at this time. If you're here to speak in opposition to these changes, please come forward. Wow. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion as second, please vote. And we are closed with a vote of four to zero. I'm going to let Commissioner Cooper take lead on this, since you've led this effort. If you want to have any additional comments or how you guys came up to what the high-value secondary conservation areas, what the process was, who your focus group was.
With the secondary, this is more applicable to Forsyth County. That which we value in Forsyth County, and the whole point of conservation is to preserve our green space, to preserve our natural topography, to preserve what is nature and what we have here as part of our typical environment. So that was why this was concentrated on that. And now what we did, we discussed, and I would like to bring Tom in on this if I may, on the aquifer recharge areas. We had a discussion last night about that with Planning and Development with some of the constituents. And that is something that we would like to reconsider, if you would address that, please, Tom.
That's right. In our code today, we have aquifer recharge areas as a secondary, listed underneath the secondary category. Our proposal had taken it out, and what I heard last night was that you had interest in considering adding that back in as a secondary.
Yes, I would, because it's so important that we protect those. I understand that it's difficult to measure. I understand it can even be difficult to identify. But nonetheless, if we have an area that we know, in that area, it is an aquifer recharge area, that's so fundamental, plus, we have so much stormwater here. I mean, that's like a standard that we have constantly with this. And having that as part of the consideration on secondary, I think is real important. I know where I live, the Etowah River Basin is part of that, and we've got to protect it. So yes, I would like to have that added in.
That'd be easy. If there's a motion made tonight, clarify both that and if you want the Planning Commission's recommendations incorporated, and we'll move forward.
Okay, thank you.
So what would be typical criteria that you would use to evaluate when somebody brings forth a proposal and designates an area that they're identifying as a recharge area? What would be the criteria you would use to evaluate whether or not that qualifies?
As conservation itself.
Well, no, as a recharge area, what would be the criteria?
And that's something that's really hard to pin down, it really is.
It'd be the design, the design professional would be identifying it, someone who's registered with the state.
They would have to have some sort of an engineer that would testify to that effect.
Some kind of licensed professional is going to be identifying it on the plans.
Because if you can't validate it, then you don't get it.
All right. Any questions from Commissioners Mills, Brown?
I just hope some people will use it in the appropriate places.
In the appropriate places, and we've done everything thus far with the open space that we can to direct this into the area of, instead of just trying to get more lots in in a place where you have floodplains. This is something that actually specifies that, which we are trying to conserve here in Forsyth County.
Yeah, I guess one of my comments is I do appreciate the comments that came from the Planning Commission, and I definitely support them, you know, wanting to make that distinction between exterior buffers and not including those, because that's, you know, that's part of the chief complaint. A lot of our citizens feel it's pig in a poke if you're getting double credit, so if we distinguish between those two, I think that's...
And they were very cognizant of that. Also, and this I thought was an excellent move forward too, was that if it's greater than, if the primary's greater, excuse me, if secondary equals at least 30% of primary, and if it's greater than, 60% or greater, that was proposed for the open space, then that, it has to go up to the 60% before it's 50.
Right.
So we did raise that. Again, that emphasizes this which we are trying to conserve down here
Right.
to increase the secondary. And by increasing the secondary, that decreases the overall open space, that is the credit given to the developer for that.
Okay. Well, if there's no further questions, Commissioner Cooper, would you like to offer a motion?
Yes, I would. Okay. I move that we accept the UDC modifications regarding conservation subdivision open space requirements as presented by Planning and Development.
Second.
One question before you vote. I just want to make sure, do you want to include the introduction of aquifers?
That's, excuse me, thank you very much.
I'll move as second.
I'll remove one second.
All right, I'll move that move. Let me redo that, all right? I move that we accept the UDC modifications regarding conservation subdivision open space requirements with the aquifer being added to the secondary conservation areas or consideration as presented by Planning and Development.
And just to confirm.
One clarification, as presented on the screen with the Planning Commission recommendation.
Yes, right?
Yes.
And I'll give that a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the measure with the language as proposed, plus the addition of the recharge areas to secondary conservation. We have a motion as second, all in favor, or everyone, please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. All right. Number 19.
Thank you, Molly.
Vanessa. Yes, thank you for taking lead on that.
Good evening. If we could have the draft for Chapter 11. Thank you. I'm going to stay on the side tonight. This is a very simple edit. If we could just scroll down, it simply changes within Chapter 11 related to the design standards to clarify the proper code references. I can answer any questions, of course, after the hearing. Thank you.
So you're identifying this as housekeeping. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come in.
There's a motion, a second please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who's here to speak in favor of these changes, please come forward. If there's anyone who's here to speak in opposition, please come forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second please vote. And we are now closed. Is there any, are there any questions from the Commission for Staff with respect to the need for these code reference changes? Would anyone like to offer a motion? I'll do so then. I'll make a motion that we approve the changes, UDC changes, as presented by Staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
We got to hear the board first.
Yep. And please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Public hearing, number 20.
Madam Chair, Board Members, item number 20 will be presented by Molly Eswin from my office.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this is coming from you, coming to you from a work session that y'all had a few, several weeks ago. Basically, the False Alarm Ordinance currently has required fines for violations in magistrate court. And of course, you don't get a citation under our False Alarm Ordinance until you've had three violations. And oftentimes, the Sheriff's Office has an even longer grace period before they actually will issue a citation. But what we've found is that other jurisdictions similar to ours and in the metro area have significantly lower fines. So the first offense, or the first actual citation, which would be the third offense, has a $100 fine mandatory in magistrate court, and we're not changing that. But it then goes up to 250 for a second citation, and then up to $1,000 in magistrate court for a third or subsequent violation. And that adds up pretty quickly, particularly when businesses are having difficulties with alarm systems and things like that. And oftentimes, we'll negotiate that in magistrate, but ultimately, we're just looking to have those fines reduced. There's also a provision in here related to false alarms that are basically direct notifications to the Sheriff's Office emergency lines and in anticipation of technology changes where text messages and other electronic messages are notifying emergency services of violations or possible alarms. We wanted to add that, just to make that criteria particularly clear. So we're just changing that definition for the criteria of what is a false alarm.
Thank you. And I'll remind everybody, this is our first public hearing on this item, so we will not be taking a vote. But with that in mind, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come in.
Motion, a second please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who's here to speak in favor of these changes? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come in.
Motion, a second please vote. We're now closed. Are there any questions from the board on this item? No? All right. Well, then, in that case, we'll move forward, and we will be, this will cycle back around next month. Correct?
That is correct. We've already commenced the legal ad.
Thank you. Number 21.
Madam Chair, Board Members, item 21 involving the Forsyth County Solid Waste Management Ordinance, Ms. Eswin from my office will present.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is also coming to you from a work session several weeks ago. The Sheriff's Office has been dealing with litter and basically just debris that's an issue in the county, just trying to make sure that we keep Forsyth clean and beautiful. And there's a provision in our Solid Waste Ordinance regarding litter that requires trucks that are traveling on our dumps to keep the trash covered. But what we find is that oftentimes, trucks will empty their loads, but it doesn't totally empty, and so you end up with debris and litter flying out of the backs of the trucks. So the Sheriff has asked that that be added as a requirement, just to tighten up the provisions that those trucks, whether they're traveling to or from the dumps, whether they've dumped their entire load or not, to keep those covered. And have otherwise added some language, just to tighten it up, so that we have a stronger case if we ever need to enforce that.
It is so needed.
Thank you.
It is.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come in.
Motion, a second please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who's here to speak in favor of this change to Ordinance 84? Please come forward.
Come on up, Michael.
Well, we can't answer it directly, but we'll answer it during discussion, so go ahead and pose it. If you want to turn in your...
What would be the...
Well, have you turned in a speaker's? You can turn in afterwards.
After?
Come on to the podium and tell us your name and ask the question.
Michael Maslenka. What would be the fines for a violation?
We can address that.
We can address that.
Yeah, we'll address, we'll make sure that that gets addressed during discussion. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor or ask a question for future response?
I started to say, if Brenda Henderson doesn't come down after sitting back there Brenda Henderson, Old Federal Road. I appreciate the time that you've taken. I appreciate Sharon Freeman's input on this, getting it changed. For years, we've lived on Old Federal Road, had to pick up the trash and the rocks from the trucks, and I'm glad to see that this is moving forward. The amendment states that no person shall drive or move any vehicle unless such vehicle prevents litter, which I interpret that to mean everybody entering and exiting the landfill. I need clarification on the following. In 2008, 2009, Eagle Point Landfield did not pay their tipping fees totaling around $2.5 million. Forsyth County had to sue, advanced disposal, and a settlement agreement was signed in February of 2010. But the Board of Commissioners went a step farther and agreed to support the expansion of the landfill. They also applied strict language to Ordinance Number 84, which that's what we're trying to amend, stating that Forsyth County agrees that Ordinance 84 shall not apply to the landfill, its on-site operations, and any contiguous expansion thereof, regardless of who owns or operates the landfill. Please provide assurances that this amendment now applies to Advanced Disposal, Eagle Point, or any waste management, or any other owners of the landfill. If their trucks are not subject to this amendment, then you're missing half of your traffic going in and out of the landfill. Then, if the amendment does not include those, would you consider modifying the 2010 settlement agreement to apply this amendment to any trucks operated by any of the landfill operators? Again, if you don't include all the traffic, you're going to miss what you're trying to accomplish with this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come in.
A motion, a second please vote. And we're closed with a vote of five to zero. Ken, just real quickly, with respect to the assurances that it would, that this would apply to the landfill, I was not around when that, I don't know that any of us were on the board at the time, but was that, the language in that settlement, should it be interpreted to mean on their property only, so that trucks coming to and from, regardless of who owns them, would be responsible if they're traveling on Forsyth County roads?
Right. So Ms. Henderson is not wrong with respect to her understanding. I will tell you, the history of Ordinance 84 goes back literally to 1999 and 2000s. And some of you may know it, some of you may not know it, and if you don't know it, let me know, and I'll fill you in on it. But the reality is, is that this language with respect to the moving of loads through the county that are tarped, that are hauling trash, would apply to all users of county roads and right-of-ways. And so it would capture any owner of the landfills whose vehicles are operating on county roads, moving loads through the county.
Thank you.
I still think it's important that you touch on Ordinance 84 back from the late 90s, and why that landfill is exempt from certain things, and what happened in the courtroom that created that.
Well, right. So the history of the landfill, and I think most of us, or some of us, understand it, was that it was the product of candidly two lawsuits that the county lost. In two different legal matters, the county attempted to block the predecessor of the landfill, which was a company called FSL, from coming to Forsyth County. And they lost, the first time, I believe the date was like in 1993. And then the landfill came in looking for basically a notice of compliance with codes, and the county denied it, and FSL sued, and the county lost again. And that spurred the creation of Ordinance 84, which was, if you look at Ordinance 84 and the way it was adopted, and some of the language in it that would have applied to the landfill, it would have effectively shut it down. So it never would have stopped, started in the first place. And of course, the landfill entity, I think it was FSL, it may have been sold by that point, was getting ready to effectively sue again, and then sought assurances from the county that Ordinance 84 didn't apply to it, which the county ultimately gave. That made its way into the settlement that Ms. Henderson correctly noted as well, and has sort of been a theme of Advanced Landfill since then. They continue to want that to be the case. This language with respect to this tarping of loads would not apply to that, I mean, let me put it this way, this would apply to their vehicles on county roads. I believe that the exemption of Ordinance 84 and some of its limitations may not apply to the property upon which the landfill sits, but this is not about that. This is about moving loads on county roads, and it would apply to them. And of course, you know, this county has talked about regulations with respect to the landfill, different than 84, but at this point, I'm not recommending we do that at this point.
Thank you. With respect to the fines...
I think Ms. Eswin may be in a better position than me to speak to this.
Thank you.
So under state law, the maximum fine in magistrate court is $1,000 fine, 60 days in jail, or a combination of both. Wouldn't think we would typically seek a jail sentence in this case. And if I recall correctly, illegal dumping or littering under the fine schedule that's been adopted by the chief magistrate is a $500 fine. With court costs, that would total 675. Of course, that would be what they would have to pay if they went and tried to pay early. It's always possible if they had a trial and were found guilty or otherwise negotiated, it could be different from that, but that would be the standard fine.
But so if fines are regulated by the state and the amount of fines, could we have a separate ordinance, or that we do, that if a company, sort of like the alcohol license, that if a company's caught violating this, you know, like...
Three strikes.
Three, you know, like... Three strikes, or you're on probation, or you... Could we not do something more to make it have more teeth to it?
Well, let me offer up this. When the fines are regulated by the state, the only thing that's regulated by the state are the maximum fines. It's the maximum $1,000, although I think there is a prohibition, John Cannard checked me on this, but I think with respect to maybe in soil and sedimentation, there may be the one exception, which is actually $2,500 as opposed to $1,000. But the typical fine structure is capped at $1,000 per offense, and it's actually six months in jail, but I think Ms. Eswin's right, how much of it is commuted?
120 days have to be probated.
Right. So it's actually six months in jail, but 120 have to be commuted. So that's the maximum. Within those tiers, we have all the flexibility we need.
Let me ask you a question. What would it take to increase that fine? You said we have it $500, and that's through the magistrate court?
We can absolutely ask for them to change their fine schedule. I'm actually looking at that for them right now.
That's correct.
Why don't we take it up to 999?
We have a $1,000 fine that comes out at 1,300 once you add in the court costs. They have it automatically calculated out.
For this kind of thing, and because it's repeated, it goes over and over and over, it just seems to me that it has to be a fine that would actually be considered punitive and to make them want to avoid the violation.
But if we got judges that won't give it?
Well, and there is always the option, so in the alcohol ordinance, we have set fines. So there's a mandatory fine in the alcohol ordinance, the False Alarm Ordinance, y'all just heard that, there's mandatory fines in the ordinance. So we can always add that to the Solid Waste Ordinance, and then it's not a matter of it being approved by the judge, it's in our ordinance, and that's what gets put on the fine schedule.
I mean, a truck, a company that has got hundreds of trucks, I mean, three strikes you're out, might be too much, that might be ridiculous, but I believe there, we need to do something to get people's attention. All it takes is them pulling their tarp and making sure it's empty. And we've put signs up everywhere, we've hired, we've got Charles, we've got Sam, we've got all these people watching them now. I mean, Charlie Gray put up a big sign that was saying it, you know, with the tire washing and the, and it saying, "Cover your," you know. I just think that that's not what we're doing tonight, but I'd love to add to the work session a discussion on how this might be structured and how it might look.
Well, two things. Number one, I know that Molly has been asked, or is working with the magistrate court with respect to their fine schedule. It sounds to me like the direction of the board is, is that with respect to this, you would like that fine schedule to be no ramp up. I'd like it to be the maximum monetary fine that we can impose per citation, is what I'm hearing from the board.
Because, let's face it, if you want to get someone's attention, hand them in the pocketbook.
And I will also say, Board Members, and Ms. Henderson, that if I hear for a moment that there is this notion that any entity in this county claims to be exempt from this for whatever reason, I'll be the first to rush back to this board, and we'll take whatever action we need to take to make sure that's not true. I don't think that argument would be advanced, but if it was advanced, that would be very troubling to me.
Thank you. We're not taking action on this night, as it is our first hearing, so we'll get this back in December. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Are there any questions that we've left unanswered for you this evening? I think we tried to address the ones that were proposed.
Do we need to put it on, to vote for it to go on the work session?
Well, that's what I was just getting asked. You know, that would be my preference. I mean, typically, any two board members, but you're here, and I don't think there's any of the least bit wrong with voting to add it to a work session, our fine and enforcement schedules with respect to litter.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second please vote. And just to remember, that was to put on the work session.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion, not on the item itself, so, and the result was a five to zero. All righty. Public hearing, number 22.
Madam Chair, Board Members, item number 22 pertains to amendments to the Forsyth County Massage and Spa Ordinance, and Ms. Eswin will handle this presentation.
Thank you. So in the spirit of revising ordinances, we are looking at the massage ordinance. This is one, like Commissioner Mills just mentioned, where we actually have revocation procedures in place for violations. And we actually, you know, had revised some violation aspects of this ordinance a few months back, I think probably in May sometime. But with respect to the actual triggering events for bringing it to you, in speaking with the Sheriff's Office, they wanted to basically take a look at those and make sure that we were actually capturing the violations that were maybe more egregious in a certain way, and also maybe being a little bit more lenient as to certain things that were more administrative in nature. So what we've gone, done is gone through and looked at the violations in Section 22230, which are the operating procedures for these massage and spa establishments, like having to have a licensed massage therapist on the premises at all times, having to have adequate record keeping, adequate lighting, things of that nature, and have said that pretty much anything administrative in that way requires three violations. And that's something that's already existing in the ordinance, but we've outlined some violations of the ordinance that are maybe more egregious. So anything sexual in nature, anything that involves inappropriate touching, or conduct of any of the massage therapists or workers on site, things like that, we've added to make that a more immediate trigger to have it come before the board. So if somebody got a citation for inappropriate touching, that would, if they got a conviction in magistrate court or pled guilty, that would immediately trigger a hearing before you. Whereas previously, that wasn't necessarily captured. Criminal activity, certain things like that, remains unchanged. There is one strike through, there are two strike-throughs, that removes some duplication. So there's something about minors being on the premises, don't worry, that's not been taken out. Don't worry, that's not been taken out. But that's already a violation under section twenty-two, two thirty. And that just is part of the three strikes aspect. So, it didn't need to be listed duplicatively. It's just captured in that three strikes, so there's no need for it to be listed again.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion in second, please vote. We're now open. If you're here to speak in favor of these changes to our massage ordinance, please come forward. Mr. Winterstein?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I'm a county resident, and of course, I speak in favor. I speak in favor, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of these changes? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion in second, please vote. We're now closed with a vote of five to zero. Again, this is our first public hearing on this item, so it will be coming back to us in December for potential adoption. Are there any questions from members of the board as to what's been proposed tonight? I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and move forward, see that in December, and move on to public hearing number twenty-three, Mr. Brown.
Public hearing twenty-three, VA nineteen zero zero forty-five. This is in Commission District Number One. It's a public hearing for a county-initiated request regarding variances. Two variances in total. The first is to allow building materials to consist of a minimum zero percent brick, natural or precast stone and/or glass. And the second is to allow accent wall materials to consist of up to one hundred percent of each vertical wall plane, properties located on Canton Highway.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second, please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. If anyone is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ethan Underwood, Miles Hands for Talent. I'm here with Mr. Tom Vincent and with Roger Grant, representing Halverson Development Corporation. We're excited about this project. And this is, I guess, the first of the decisions that you'll be making tonight. But we are asking for variances, and the county facilitated this with the county-initiated application, to bring a new architectural style to West Forsyth County. This project, and this is really the only public hearing we have tonight. We have lots of supplemental information. We're happy to answer any questions regarding the application. But particularly what the public hearing is regarding is, the property is subject to the Beaufort Highway overlay. And it was, the Beaufort Highway overlay was originally designed from the city of coming to, out to Gwinnett County on the river. It was subsequently extended to the west from the city of coming through, or to the county line on Cherokee, on the west side, to Cherokee County. But it really didn't take into account the different architectural style and the comprehensive plans, future visions for that area. So, we're here to help establish that tone. And we've worked very, very much with Commissioner Cooper. We've appreciated her comments, and I think this is bringing a great vision to the area. In particular, the Beaufort Highway overlay states that the building facades must be a minimum of seventy-five percent brick, precast stone, natural stone, or glass, with no more than twenty-five percent accent material. However, in working with Commissioner, working with neighbors, there was an emphasis on preserving the rural feel, and we were repeatedly, repeatedly directed to the city of Milton's Crab Apple Community. So, working through that, working with architects, the architectural design was to come back with this modern farmhouse look. Well, unfortunately, to accomplish the modern farmhouse look, it can't be done with a seventy-five percent brick or stone requirement. So, that's why we are asking here for these technical modifications. Now, when we initially asked for the request, we said, you know, hundred percent and zero percent on the primary and the accent materials. Since then, we have pared that down so that we can give specifics. What this would require would be a minimum of thirty percent, or what can be provided would be a minimum of thirty percent brick, natural, precast stone, or glass, with seventy percent being, I guess, what are deemed accent materials. Now, this is the actual project. It's a fifteen point seven three eight acre tract. Parts of it are already zoned commercial, but we're asking to take it to a CBD zoning with conditional use permits for a convenience store with gas pumps and a round-the-clock operation at that, of the gas facility. This is the location. You can see it, it's at the intersection of Highway twenty, Post Road, and Tribble Road. It's at the northeast corner. But importantly, it is in the dead center of the Camp Brown character area and the Highway twenty neighborhood note. So, this was designed to be a major activity center, and again, this is setting the tone for the area. This is a rendering of the, sorry, this is a rendering, an aerial view, and we had the site planned in the previous slide. And again, this is the architecture that was recommended for approval by the planning commission, and that's where, to facilitate this, though, it requires some variances. So, for this particular application, what we are requesting, again, is going to have a brick-stone or brick, glass, stone, or brick materials on the facades of at least thirty percent, cement shingle or lap siding with approximately twenty-seven percent stucco. This is a hard-coated stucco, it's a quality material, it's an allowed accent material. But what this allows is the forming of a stucco in a board and batten shape. It actually is more durable, it doesn't allow water to get behind it, but it provides that, that modern farmhouse look. And then with the metalwork and the shutters being just at two percent. So, with that, we are asking for the variances to be approved to allow, instead of the seventy-five percent brick, stone, or glass, reduce that to thirty, and then the accent materials, instead of twenty-five, be increased to seventy in this mix. This allows this new architectural design, and what we hope may be, trigger some code changes so that variances aren't necessary in the future, that this is, this is the model that's going to be designed. With that, I know that we do have a hearing coming up, I mean, a decision tonight. We wanted to let you know that we had to file several variances for that. The planning commission struggled with that, but they did recommend approval with those variances. There were eleven that were originally approved. I did speak with the chairman about a concern with variance number eleven, and we'll go ahead and state for the record, we are withdrawing variance number eleven, which is the lot width request. So, we've pared that down. These variances will allow the architecture that we're looking for, and we look forward to seeing this in West Forsyth. We'll reserve the remainder of our time for any questions or rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Note, there's four minutes and thirty-one seconds left on that side. Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Do you wish to use that time or just move on? Alrighty, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second, please vote. We're now closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioner Cooper, I know you worked on this quite a bit.
Yes, we have. And as Ethan had stated, this is something that we're looking for to set the aesthetic tone, the architectural tone of this area. Until this came along, pretty much what we have there on Highway twenty on the west side is outdoor storage. And, you know, some houses, of course, some homes, but that sit far back away from the road. So, this is going to be something that sets the whole commercial look for Highway twenty. What we've tried to do is honor and preserve that which, the ideas coming from Pools Mill Bridge also with this. If you'll notice that the vertical board and batten at the top, that goes with the vertical siding that is on the bridge. The crossing in the shutters, that also is on the bridge as well. We've done metal roof on it, dark gray metal roof. And what we've added to this that's a little different for that farm, modern farm look, is the shaker shingles. And you'll see the water, the stone goes, watermark stone on the walls, and then the shaker shingles in a dark gray up from that. So, this is a whole new thing for us, and we're very excited about it. That's why we had to ask for these changes. And also, as you know, that which was set for the Beaufort Highway overlay, which is a terrific overlay, and it's very applicable to that which is east of four hundred on Highway twenty. But when you get west of four hundred on Highway twenty, it's, it's a different look. It's a totally different topography, it's a different, it's much more rural, so.
I think it makes a lot of sense. From a continuity standpoint, you can still, you know, use as a basis a lot of the landscape requirements and things that are there, and then take the, take the architectural items and kind of make them your own from that side of the county. So, that definitely sounds like an upcoming focus group and project, maybe.
Oh, it is, absolutely. And we're going to be doing what we talked about. This is sort of a side note of doing something in addition to that which is on the Beaufort Highway overlay, but make one that is applicable to the west side. We had talked about doing that, and we'll be blending this with it.
Alright, are there any questions from the board members? Commissioner Cooper, would you like to offer a motion?
I would. I move that we accept the request for variance of UDC twenty-one dash eleven dot point six A, one through two, to allow building materials consist of a minimum of thirty percent brick, natural, or precast stone, and/or glass, and two, to allow accent wall materials to consist of up to seventy percent of each vertical wall plate.
Second.
We have a motion in second, please vote. And the motion carries with a, with a vote of five to zero. And we are at the end of all of our public hearings, finally. So, at this time, Karen is going to announce any public comment speakers that may still be with us this evening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. We're now at the second public comment portion of tonight's meeting, and we have a form that has been turned in. Mr. Winterstein?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. I stopped by and bought the newspaper, and this is Friday, November the first. And the headlines read that Forsyth County students lead the state in ACT scores. Once again, the Forsyth County school system achieved some of the highest ACT scores in the state of Georgia. And later on, another paragraph says that the Forsyth County's school students, staff, parents, community, and business members should all be very proud of our ACT scores. That's one of the reasons why this county is such a great place to live. It's because of our students, and it's because of our school system. I believe we got the best students in the state of Georgia. And I believe there's a hundred and fifty-eight other counties that would like to trade their students for ours. I am proud of these students, and because of that, we have the county we have today. I grew up, I started growing up in the city of Atlanta. And at that time, I was told that the city of Atlanta, the city schools, were the best schools in the state. And at the time, they probably pretty were. And then I remember when DeKalb County started being developed, and they were building brick ranch houses there. And I was told there's good living in DeKalb County, and the schools are good there, too. And I remember Gwinnett County, and when it was developing. At one time, Gwinnett County was the richest, one of the richest counties in the United States. And now, I don't want to live in Atlanta. I don't want to live in DeKalb County, and I don't want to live in Gwinnett County. I'd like to live the rest of my life here. And we have the county that is a great county, and we should always protect the welfare of this county. We should protect the value of this county, and we should protect the future opportunities of our county. Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein.
There have been no other forms submitted. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Moving on with old business, Mr. Brown, you can please brief us on number one.
Zoning application thirty-nine sixteen, Halverson Development Corporation, located in Commission District Number One. This is a request to rezone fifteen point seven three eight acres from A one CBD, R one, and R two R to CBD for proposed commercial buildings totaling eighty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-three square feet, including a fifty-one thousand nine hundred eight square foot large-scale retail establishment with a conditional use permit for a convenience store with gas pumps allowing round-the-clock operation. The applicant's also requesting variances. The first is to increase the excess number of parking spaces from ten percent to fifteen percent. Number two, increase the parking that fronts the main building entrance from three hundred spaces to three hundred and eleven. Number three, increase the percentage of parking that fronts the main building entrance from sixty percent to one hundred percent. Four, reduce the sides of the building exterior that is, that parking is distributed on from two sides to one. Five, reduce the landscape strip along Tribble Road and the north side of Era Drive Extension from twenty feet to ten feet. Six, reduce the setback abutting Era Drive Extension on the northern boundary of our parcel one from forty feet to ten. Seven, reduce the zoning setback along the eastern boundary of the property from one hundred feet to thirty. Eight, reduce the zoning setback along the eastern boundary of property from fifty feet to thirty. Nine, reduce the zoning buffer along the eastern property boundary from fifty to thirty. Ten, reduce the zoning buffer along the eastern property boundary from forty feet to thirty. And number eleven, reduce the lot width of the excess parcel between out parcels one and two from sixty feet to fifty, the properties located on Canton Highway. The planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning from A one CBD, R one, and R two R to CBD, with the recommendation that the Board of Commissioners consider county-initiated variances, and that was the application item we heard just prior to public comments. The public hearing was held on August twenty-seventh. The proposed use is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Staff is supportive without the variances.
Thank you. Is, oh, we're not a public hearing. Alright, let's open up some discussion here. Commissioner Cooper, this is in your district.
Yes, I'm going to ask Ethan if you would come up, please. You're the one that gets paid the big bucks, so you explain all of this if you would.
I'm sorry.
You get paid the big bucks, so if you would, go ahead and explain all of this, if you would, for the variances.
Sure, if we may. We have worked, as stated, very hard. If you don't mind, can you put our presentation up? Very hard with the neighbors, and they've been very helpful, and we appreciate it tremendously. We heard everything from traffic to landscaping, and we have reached agreements with those neighbors, and we're excited about this project. With that, as stated, and perhaps the biggest issue we ought to go ahead and address is why the number of variances that we requested. It's probably best to think of them in groups, because if you look at it, you've got commercial regulations, then you have the Beaufort Highway regulations, then you have the big box regulations. A lot of these say the same things, but we had to ask for variances to all of them, even though it was the same, same variance request. So, looking at those requests, zip through here. As stated, we are withdrawing the request for variance number eleven, so we can take that one off the table. Variances one through four were a request to be able to do exactly what the UDC asked, is put your parking in the middle of your development and surround it with your buildings. So, in order to do that and comply with the code, in fact, here's a figure one from the UDC that says, this is an example of what we want it to look like, and we, this is the attempt. So, that was variances one through four, which is just to be able to put that parking field in the middle and fit. Two, we had, variances five and six came up because of a right-of-way. This was originally proposed to be a private drive, but the residents were adamant that this be a public road. Well, when you go from a private drive to a public road, your setbacks change. So, that triggered some new variances that were required, just because this is going to be a public road. But we've also submitted a zoning condition that the developer says, they'll dedicate the road as public, but they will maintain it at no cost to the county. Regarding variances seven, eight, nine, and ten, is this small blue sliver. The board abandoned this portion, or abandoned this portion, or approved the abandonment of this portion of Era Road on the north side of it. And in working out a deal with the neighbors, it was not required that any portion of that road be given to the neighbors. And had that road not been given to the neighbors, this variance wouldn't be necessary. But what was explained to these adjoining neighbors, or by them, was they said they used that road for access, they put their boat in the back of their property, and they really needed to keep it. So Halverson, even though it was entitled to keep that, agreed to let them have 30 feet of that property they would otherwise get, so that they could maintain a driveway for their boats. The problem with that is it necessitated the variance. So that's the hardship that we've experienced. So with that, we're really only dealing with that side setback, the parking field, and this road. That's really the three reasons that we need the variances. That covers all 10 that we were requesting. And as stated, we're excited to present this. If we may, and I don't want to keep rattling on, we did submit zoning conditions. There's one that I do not have a slide for. If I could show on the display?
Absolutely.
The neighbors in Hilltop Subdivision, which joins this property to the east, wanted some type of a barrier. And so we've submitted a zoning condition. It's referenced as Exhibit C to the conditions we submitted, for a screen wall substantially similar to this exhibit. This exhibit was emailed to the county, so if approved, that'll be part of the records. With that, we do hope that you will approve it as requested, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
And the screen wall will include the landscaping that's depicted there?
There'll be a screen wall, and on the east side of that, there'll be a 50-foot buffer, except where the variance is approved.
The example that you showed there this evening, is that similar to what's being proposed, and that you will be landscaping it similarly, not just the wall itself?
It actually would be landscaped much more thoroughly than that.
Okay, I'm seeing head nods from your clients. I just want to make sure that it's captured in there.
The wall is yes. We just want to say that the plantings are not going to be that Spartan. That's what we wanted. We wanted to emphasize the wall and not the plantings there.
Ethan, is this the actual wall that the residents wanted?
This is, it was shown on our site plan, and yes, they were asking for a, they were actually asking for a cinder block or a brick wall. And this will look a lot better and blend in better.
Okay.
Ned Jibbs with your recollection, Commissioner Cooper?
Oh, it does. Also, we've got, I believe it's Rogers that write with, that does the landscaping, and we'll be doing the landscaping on this. You can answer any questions as to what type of landscape material you'll be using. So if you would come up.
It could be flaying. Flaying wall.
And we have got, I believe, some diagrams.
Well, I have a form. I'll get it to you in just a minute. Yeah. Roger Grant with Columbia Engineering. I'm the landscape architect and site planner. Yes, we will have extensive landscaping. Forsyth County has a very thorough landscape code, especially with respective commercial buffering to residential. And there is also the overlay district, the landscaping along the frontage of SR 20 and Tribble. Those will be, you know, beautification strips that exceed the minimum standards that will be set. And we really want to make sure that we help in the same respect that the architecture is setting the tone here for Forsyth County, for this corridor, that we're going to do the same for landscape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things with this, we've been, I guess this started about a year ago, close to it, I mean, you know, 10 months at least. And you've had, I know two public participation meetings. Have there been more than two?
We've had three formal ones, and we've had another three with various neighbors.
Okay. And in the feedback from those that, whose property is going to be abutting it from the back, as well as from the east side, because on the west side is where you're going to have triple gap, no, it's a triple road, excuse me. So with that, my understanding, I know that you've worked diligently with those folks to try to, and you've given them this extra buffer, this extra 30 feet on that east side that goes into theirs. Also, I remember there was a request that they still be able to use, not as a cut-through, but well, it's cut-through, to Tribble Road. If you would explain how that worked, backing up a little bit for Era Road, of how we took that and made that where, the way the residents wanted it to work, for them to be able to turn left on Tribble.
Could we, Susan, can we switch back to our presentation?
Kind of Central Parkway. All the variances were off of that Central Parkway, correct, that they're creating?
Yeah.
Not all, but.
But yeah.
The red road is, it's a dirt road that exists today. The county has approved the abandonment of that. But in exchange for that, what is being proposed is the blue road. That will be a county road, but it will be maintained at the developer's expense. So we've addressed that in zoning conditions. And that continues to provide the folks that live off Dalen Drive, which is Hilltop Subdivision, to access to Tribble Road.
And that was their request, and I know that that was.
They were adamant about that.
Yeah, and that was why that was done, was because it was what they wanted to do, to be able to turn left onto Tribble Road.
Correct. And we are still working on that with GDOT as far as the specifics of that, but that was, that's the intention, and that's the developer's request.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do any of you, any of my fellow commissioners have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm ready to make a motion, but Ken, this is a long one, so.
Be following along.
What would be the best, just to go ahead and read off all these variances? Is that what I need to do?
Ask for some additions?
Well, didn't I hear that there's only 10 variances being sought?
Yes, 11 will be omitted.
Yeah, I don't know that you need to, I think what you need to do is approve the agenda item as stated, except for the variance that, and to include the variances, except for variance number 11. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second? We have a, well, I'll hold the call, but.
Forgive me. What I'm seeing on the screen is, appears to be the Planning Commission recommendation. We added several conditions at the commissioner's request and for the neighbor's request that were not included.
Yeah, we have those in front of us, but before we pull the trigger, can we go ahead and display the red line?
We should, absolutely.
That we have in front of us.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll leave it in suspended animation until we.
Withdraw the motion.
Okay, we don't have those versions.
I'll hand you my copy.
Can we, yeah, put them on the screen?
Molly, are these correct?
Yes, they are. Yeah, I've gone through these. They are.
Commissioner Cooper, could I have another go at it then? If that's, is that okay?
Yes.
Can I withdraw my second?
So in light of that, and Mr. Underwood, this is what you're, this is what has been, yeah, all right. So Commissioner Cooper, I think then the motion, again, just to save the board from having to wade through 95 lines of text to read that, would be to approve the item, the agenda item, as stated, less variance 11, with the conditions as displayed.
So moved.
Second. All right.
One question.
Display everything.
Hold on, one second.
Yes, sir.
What are you saying?
Do we need to call out the cup?
All right, well, the, does the agenda item have the cup in it?
Yes.
Again, that's what I was attempting to do.
It does state that there's a cup for, I believe, a.
Thank you.
Gas station convenience store. Are we ready to pull the trigger? I'm waiting for Ken to go, "Yeah."
I'm comfortable with the agenda item as read.
All righty then, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing number two. Actually, I believe my people are not even here, so I'm going to let Mr. Brown describe the item, and then I'm going to give it a punt.
Yes, old business two, CP 190012, North Shaw Properties LLC in Commission District Number Five, requesting the issuance of a conditional use permit to operate warehousing totaling 1,168 square feet, an open storage yard, and a residence for a night watchman in an existing structure. 1.461 acres of property currently zoned CBD. The request includes four variances. It is located on Beaufort Dam Road. The Planning Commission recommends denial. The public hearing was held on June 25th. The proposed use was found to be not in conformity with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Ken and I discussed earlier today, we've got a new provision that may make this palatable, so we're going to go ahead and give the applicant time to mull that over. I'll take care of that in the next day or so with them. And so I'm going to make a motion that we bring this back again as old business on November the 21st. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of four to zero, with Commissioner Cooper temporarily out of the room. Number three was postponed until January the 16th. Coming back is old business again. Item number four has been moved to a public hearing in December, on December the 5th, which brings us to new business. Mr. Perkins and Ken?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is an item actually we discussed at the work session. There was a tremendous amount of information that goes into our pretreatment program. It is going to be combined with an ordinance, a pretreatment ordinance. But the first part was to actually adopt a resolution, actually adopting the program itself. This is a very technical document that Tim and his staff have worked on very diligently. You will note that it is mercifully not in your agenda packet lest it be 12 to 15 inches high. So what you're doing this evening is adopting the program, which is the technical component, that will then be merged with the actual ordinance itself, which is the enforcement aspect of it. Mr. Perkins?
That's correct. And we'll be starting the public hearing process. We'll be starting the public hearing process for both the pretreatment program and the ordinance at an upcoming meetings. We will not be submitting the resolution to the EPD until after that's finished.
Do you have an idea of when that will take place? Will it be the end of this year, or will it move into the beginning of next year?
It's being scheduled on the regular upcoming agendas. I'm not sure which date, but it'll be.
December the 5th.
This year.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, one point, and this is for you, Mr. Perkins. If someone wanted to review this technical document, where might they be able to get that if they wanted to review it?
If they could come to our office, we would have that document, and we will have the document available during the public meetings in the bag.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board as to what's being done here?
Ready for a motion?
I am.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution adopting Forsyth County's industrial users pretreatment program with authorization to transmit same to EPD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Score.
Number two.
Madam Chair, board members, I will at least start this one off. Mr., the county manager may want to provide some information as well. Bottom line is, the Board of Commissioners at its work session, and candidly, in a series of different meetings going all the way back into earlier part of this year, has discussed the notion of possibly changing the regional commission to which Forsyth County is a part. In your agenda packet, you can see actually the various geographic areas where the various counties are broken down into their various regional committees. Interestingly, the only mechanism to do that is to actually ask for a general law amendment to do that, and you actually send it to the Board of Managers for the Department of Community Affairs. So there is in your packet a resolution that would accomplish that. It accomplishes the fact that that is your desire to move into the ARC from Georgia Mountains. It asks for that to go to the Board of Managers, and it gives the county manager the authority to basically do anything else that he believes is prudent to accomplish the objectives of the board in that endeavor. And that's my presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board as to what we're doing this evening?
What is the, what does this board believe the true benefit is?
As I see them, affinity with other counties that share similar types of struggles with respect to growth, economic development, more like, you know, that are more similar to that, the issues that we deal with here, rather than some of the more rural, remote counties that are driven by different economic development issues. There, a lot of them would be more tourism or agrarian, whereas we're more, we have a little bit more affinity, I think, to the North Fulton, the Cherokee, and the Gwinnett areas. Additionally, we're half in, half out with respect to water issues, with our water district, with our transportation issues. I believe that we would be able to have a better leveraging of the relationship with ARC in getting regional projects done in our area. And that's, those are the benefits as I see them.
I think just, I agree 100% with what she said. I think that the, that when we heard the presentations made by, I don't think anybody said they wanted to be more like Gwinnett.
I hope not.
I didn't hear her say that at all.
No, I think you learn.
No, no, but, but, but they're a part of this. And so is DeKalb, and so is Atlanta, and so is Forsyth.
I mean, do you think we're going to reduce our population to be the size of Dawson?
There's nothing to it. I just don't want to go down the road. We've become more and more like them.
Well, here's, here are two other things to consider with that. One of them is, there is no mandate that you take any type of directives with them with respect to how we grow our county or don't grow our county. So they don't come as a mandate. We don't have to become more urbanized just by virtue of being a member of ARC. I think it's a reality that we are more like some of our neighboring counties to the south. The other issue is really a matter of bandwidth and depth of staff and capabilities. Right now, as it stands, our own GIS department has higher capability to deliver projects to us than we'd get from GMRC. You know, if we're to start looking at how we could leverage some of the different staff they have with respect to planning and other, and other issues in ARC, I think that there's actually, could potentially be some benefit there. Whereas right now, we've kind of, we've kind of outgrown the capabilities of our current regional commission, and it's really not providing, it's not an augmentation of our staff, whereas ARC would be an augmentation of our staff.
I think in talking to Representative Tanner about their research department and how much they help him, is that with grants and notices of grants, and with helping our grant writers, you know, with, with research and different things that they have to have to make the grant successful, it's another great component that we haven't had before.
What kind of grants are you looking for? Affordable housing grants?
No. Why would you just keep trying to make some trouble?
Transportation grants.
Transportation, sidewalks, sewer. I mean, they have all different kinds of things that we're not tapping into.
Well, and the reality is, our citizens are not commuting into the North Georgia Mountains by and large. We don't cross county lines. We don't, the county lines blur between us and North Fulton and Cherokee and Gwinnett to a lesser extent. And so we have citizens that are moving across through, through the region more to the southwest and east than we do really to the north of us.
It's whole county.
And so it makes more sense from, to look at things regionally and how we're interacting with those counties. And I will tell you, I took that, that issue that you've brought up head-on and expressed that as a concern that our board might have with respect to coming to ARC and was, you know. that our Board might have with respect to coming to A R C and was, you know, in no uncertain terms, was comforted by what they told me, that there are no mandates, there's not a certain attainment levels that are expected of us or participation in federal housing projects. It doesn't, you don't have to take all of that along with it. So I think the concerns are really, and I had some of those myself in the beginning when I was trying to think of what the pros and the cons are. When, you know, there's sometimes some, you like to feel like you're the big, you know, the big fish in the small pond, except that you realize that the big fish isn't getting all the benefits, that the big fish could be getting, that that fish could be getting in a pond that is with other fish that struggle with same issues and eat the same food and live in the same environment. The reality is, we are an exurban county to Atlanta. We're not a, we're not, we're no longer a rural county.
Madam Chair, I got a couple of questions. Is Hall County and Cherokee County a part of A R C?
A R C, Cherokee is.
It's right there in front of you.
Cherokee is.
Cherokee is.
So my only concern is, it's just another step closer to some people wanting to get into mass, not just transportation, but to the MARTA and the affordable housing and do take advantage of some of this.
To participate in MARTA would take the vote of our people to tax themselves.
I understand.
And as we know, we saw that go down in flames in Gwinnett. And I think Gwinnett is quite far ahead of us on that trajectory.
I'm moving that way, yes.
That is not an imminent threat in this county for people who are fearful of that.
Okay.
So.
And I think another thing that is a benefit is legislatively when we're fighting for things like the design standards, which I've been meaning to bring up to all of y'all because now the contractors industry has joined with and they think apartments will be next. It's a real battle. I mean, it is for us to be able to keep our overlays and our design standards. I mean, we need to all be engaging in this and in every way we can because, but these cities that exist and these counties know more about what that battle is about and understands the importance of it to our citizens. When you start talking, and I have, I've called our, I've called senators north of us asking for them to back off and not be a part of this. And they're like, but y'all try to tell people what color to paint their house. And it's like, no. I mean, there's a lot more that goes with it. And I think that there is a, there's more understanding when you're a part of a group and there's more power in the being a part of the group when you're trying to save things for your citizens that they've worked so hard for.
And that's what I was getting at when I was talking about, you know, shared affinities with other counties. These are the counties who have dealt with that already. These are people who are going through that. And the other, a lot of the counties who, quite frankly, don't have the enviable position that this county does with being a magnet for growth and people wanting to be here, people wanting to live here and set up businesses here and educate their children here. Counties that do not have those same attractions don't understand the need to sometimes manage that growth. They would welcome anything that would come down the pike. And I'm not saying that that's necessarily the counties that are part of G M R C. But the reality is that as you move away from the metro Atlanta area, north, southeast, or west, as you get out into more remote areas, there is going to be less regulation on those kind of things. There's gonna be less standards because those are counties that are in a position where they're looking just to make something happen for their citizens. We have the good fortune to be in a position where everybody wants to be here and it's our job to maintain a quality of life for our citizens.
Of course.
And ensure that the growth is properly managed.
That's a great elevator speech, but when I went to those meetings and you've been in them too, did those meetings not seem like the extremely left-leaning liberals that were in those meetings majority? And their agendas that they did and the presentations they made?
I don't know that that has any bearing on what this county adopts or does not adopt or goes along with. And I would say that for, you know, for every community that you would describe that way, you also have Milton, you also have Alpharetta, you also have the technologically savvy and, and, you know, areas jurisdictions to the north of the metro. So.
And every time I talk, just like today, Chris Grimes and I were talking about the issue that Chief Head and I have been talking about with this F I C, whatever it is.
F I C, 510.
510. And counties under 100,000 people are not having to deal with it. It's on Tuesday's agenda. Chris is going to talk to Cobb and talk to these other counties that are having to deal with this because it's costing our businesses unbelievable amount of money because of it being in there. I mean, you can't even reach out some of our departments. And when we're dealing with issues with regulations that now, because we are over that threshold, these other counties don't have it to deal with.
They don't have the resources, they don't have the understanding, and quite frankly, they don't have the priority of that either.
Eric Johnson, you have any, you wanna add to this at all?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think the counties south of us have a greater opportunity to impact us than the counties north of us. And so if you wanna have a seat at the table when those discussions are occurring and play defense when it's appropriate, then being involved in the discussions with the counties most apt to impact us positively or negatively versus those that aren't facing the same issues. And Dave and I were just saying, I mean, you could look east and say, well, Hall County is part of G M R C. Our action may spur them to consider it. I would suggest that you'd wanna be going down to ask Community Affairs for the authority to move before Hall gets the idea because one of us might make it in and the next one may cause them to have second thoughts about the size of G M R C. And so, I share your concerns, but if you don't have a seat at the table, you don't have the opportunity to influence those that are making decisions that will impact us even though they can't make decisions for us.
And Russell McMurray with GDOT has told us so many times that the attendance at those meetings are critical. And being at the table to fight for things and to make the needs of our county known and to, I just think that they've got lots of money that we need for roads.
That interests me.
Well, A R C was instrumental in helping us move forward. We're still working on it, but moving forward on the Guinness Ferry, A R C, I tapped them and got them involved to bring the cities, us and GDOT all to the table. And we're moving forward. And so I think being able to leverage that, that's a prime example of being able to leverage those relationships.
Madam Chair, I have one question. The thing I've heard, haven't heard is, would they think, you think they'll be able to help us get the water intake that we haven't been able to do under G M R C or help, or would it make a difference?
I think that they have more muscle. I think they have more influence at the Capitol. I don't know that that would translate directly, but I think that definitely, I mean.
The EPD and the Corps almost have it hatched out. It's almost there.
Are we all in or are we not?
I think, yeah.
No, I get it.
I mean, this is the third of our.
Well, I don't know if A R C will be able to do that, but the, it's almost hatched out. We're just waiting for them to get their final contract and then we're allowed to move forward the rest of it. We're almost there on the water, on the easement and the water.
Let's not go too far down the rabbit hole. We've got a couple more items to address.
Alright, we'll pull a vote on it.
Just keep it to A R C versus G M R C, not water and everything else. If everybody's, if everybody's ready, I'd ready to make a motion that I would make a motion to approve the resolution, officially requesting that the Board, the Department of Community Affairs take up action considering us for changing our regional commission boundaries, taking us from G M R C into A R C. For the motion, a second, please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Alright, number three.
Board members, Madam Chair, if you want me to start this, I'll be happy to start it. And if you want to have this full discussion this evening, we can. If you wanna think about talking about it a little bit and moving it, that's fine as well. It could turn into a lengthy discussion, maybe not. So the purpose of this discussion is to talk about S P L O S seven. And particularly with respect to Level A and B projects, and I don't know that we need a whole lot of formality about this, I will just simply say this. S P L O S seven, unlike our current S P L O S, which I actually like a lot better, but at the time, S P L O S seven divided our project lists very specifically. We had a Level A projects, which were very clearly delineated projects that were effectively mandatory. The way the resolution is set up is that we could advertise to the voters the Level A projects and hold out to the voters that if you approve S P L O S, we're gonna do the Level A projects. And there's a lot of law attached to that. If you hold those projects out to the voters and you incentivize and induce them to vote in your tax, the law says you have to do those projects, whether you have enough funds to do the projects or not from S P L O S, you've gotta figure out a way to make them happen. But the county also identified a series of things called Level B projects. And Level B projects were projects that we basically said to the voters, we don't know if we're gonna have enough money out of, once we finish Level A projects, to do any Level B projects. And the only way we're ever gonna get to fund any Level B projects is if we appropriate or reasonably project that we're gonna have enough money to completely fund all the Level A projects. Well, we did. S P L O S seven's doing pretty well. Thank you very much. And so we got through our Level A projects and now we have been managing our money with respect to different income streams, mainly S P L O S seven funds, but also leveraging other available funding sources to try and leverage and get through as many S P L O S B projects as we can. Very reasonable. That's exactly what we would expect it to have done. The issue is however, is does the Board wanna give some additional or different direction on how many, if any, to fund any remaining Level B projects? And here's why we can ask that. Until you give different direction, I think the county has reasonably gone forward and tried to leverage getting done as many Level B projects as we can. But priorities change. What we said to the voters was, we will build as many of the Level B projects as S P L O S seven funds can be reasonably funded or budget. And leveraging other income streams is perfectly appropriate, but you may have a different priority at this point. And you need to give us some direction and you give us the direction, we will sort of retool how we're attempting to fund these Level B projects. That's the point, I think, of tonight's discussion. And that's what we all, as the implementers of your policy, need to hear. Madam Chair.
Thanks, Ken. Molly, the news.
Well, from a somewhat of a purist standpoint of the funding that is in S P L O S, that was in, from S P L O S seven itself, where do we stand on that? I think that we've pretty well spent, if we're not blending it with other revenue streams, that in and of itself has pretty much been liquidated for the Level A. I mean, am I wrong on that or?
Level A's all been completed, is what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying, yes. And that the money, the money too for S P L O S seven was pretty well spent. If you're looking specifically for the money that was in S P L O S seven, if that has not been spent mostly for these projects of the Level A.
Well, I think it's, that's a deep ruin, I think. I think the way Dave described it to us in that meeting, it's very complex. He's looking complex.
Okay.
That it's a lot of different sources, a lot of different, that is attached to a lot of different projects.
I understand. Well, then, I'm not trying to complicate it. On this, it is Level B. We have got some on here that, quite frankly, the need has not met that which was projected that the need would be for some of these, particularly on these intersections. Dr. Dunn Road, for instance, it really does not have the utilization that it was projected to have.
I think one of the things to look at, maybe it's.
I just wanted to say, I'm sorry.
Oh, go on, go ahead.
But on that one too, the price for that has doubled. It was proposed to cost 500,000 and I believe it's a little over a million now. So that's something else to look at.
So what I was thinking is that if we look at what projects are still being completed that are being completed in a way that is still utilizing other additional funds, maybe we need to kind of look, sift through where, what's left, how it's being funded, and then shift the funding up from things that are, instead of being put in a position where everything is being funded from multiple sources, let's kind of move up the priority line and pay off specific projects and just complete them under S P L O S seven.
I like that.
Because I think then we're not, we have a truer accounting then of what we've actually gotten out of it rather than having some monies from here and some monies from there. And that will kind of lead us to do a little triage too on the project list and determine which ones really are less of a priority. They're gonna fall to the bottom of that and they won't get funded or they will not get further funded.
And that priority list changes.
Right.
You know, there's no way, because predictions are just that, they're predictions. And through the years since 2013, some of these that were put down as a priority, like that intersection for Dr. Dunn, like I said, legalization truly is not there.
I think it's got a lot to do though, where the project is so far, because we voted on these projects. We've taken votes on it several times to give the authority to go ahead. And I think that there's some projects in the meeting we had that are, that they haven't went and bought right away. And if you, you know, that you're not as deeply into it.
Right.
That it's easier to stop than those that you have already are in the process. And I think Ken even said that as far as our S P L O S requirements, you would feel better if we complete design, even Dunn, if we would go ahead and complete the design and that would meet the, more of the intent.
That's right. I mean, I think that twofold. Number one, if you're gonna give direction on how you want, what the chairman was talking about, the notion of, let us know how much we have just under S P L O S seven and if we need to reprioritize Level B, just to fund that of S P L O S seven, let us know. But if there are items we've already started, I would rather have a finished deliverable on that item. If it's designed, I'd like to get design done. S P L O S doesn't like waste. And stopping something in the middle of it that therefore basically means that money just goes up into the ether, I don't wanna do that.
Right. So that's what I would say, and that was a complex funding mechanism when you look at these projects. But if you look at the projects first and say, where are we with each of them? What is the expenditures? What are the commitments? And then kind of go, triage it from that perspective. And then you'll automatically see where you need to wrap something up with a project. And if something is just, it's not been started yet, that's gonna obviously fall to the bottom. But if you can, if you can take an item, perhaps Dr. Dunn being an example, where it's no longer a priority to build it, but you're in it for design to a certain point, you wrap that part up. But there's probably, you probably have that situation with other projects too, that you have portions of it done. And so you've gotta kind of figure out where the stopping point is on some of those. And if the ones that don't get started at all, then that's.
As with Dr. Dunn, it's my understanding that the design is about 80% complete.
So I think, John, I think we completed design last Friday. Was that?
Yes, that's correct.
So Commissioners, Dr. Dunn is a good example because.
Dunn is done.
The design is done.
Okay.
And we haven't acquired a single easement or piece of property for that. So.
So that's a difference.
There's value to having a design because it could be turned over to GDOT, it could be turned over to the city. We could use it if we ever wanted to use it, but we have a product for the money that we've spent. Back to Ken's point, there's value to the community of having spent the money to have a design. But unlike some other projects where we've moved into right-of-way acquisition and one would argue, what's the value of having some right-of-way but not all of it? In the case of Dr. Dunn, we haven't acquired any of it. So there's a clean, clean break for that project. There may be for another project, but that's a great example of value to what we've spent, but we haven't spent money on something where we would lose value if we didn't complete the project. And as Commissioner Cooper said, that project has more than doubled. It was an estimate of half a million, it's more than a million now. We have a relatively modest amount in that project for that design and we have a product that has value even if we table the project.
How many remaining incomplete S P L O S seven B projects do we have?
It's in your book.
I've, yeah. There's only a short number of them, but there's one major. If I may, if I may, there's one major project that is partially funded here, but we need to lean more on this funding we're bouncing. And that's the last phases of Old Atlanta. That is Phase Four, it's being combined with, is named here. Until we get that under contract, that, I've got a large estimate here, it's taking up most of what's left in seven B for roads. Part of the complexity of this, and I can explain, it's not that complex. Some of the projects are named both in the road referendum, the road bond referendum, and in S P L O S seven, which gives us flexibility. In my estimates, I'm watching the whole picture, I've moved most of Old Atlanta over here to seven to give us room for the other 100 million to do Ronald Reagan and the projects that are only named there. So I can say strongly that priority wise, if only by the mere sheer size of it, until we get Old Atlanta Phase Four and Five under contract, I would look to these funds here to be prioritized toward that.
I absolutely agree with that. I mean, that's a project that's been hung like a carrot over South Forsyth's head for at least 13, 14 years.
And I just wanna say that that is perfectly consistent with the resolution and what we told the voters we would do. And doing some interim prioritization like that, like this, is perfectly appropriate. The law understands that things change. The law understands.
The law understands that projects get more expensive. The law understands that priorities, as time goes on, may differ. And so this is exactly the kind of thing that we're perfectly appropriate to discuss.
Okay. So what action would you like to see from us this evening? I mean, do you want that, you want that prioritization, or do you want specifically us to call out certain things that come, I mean, to say, yes, the completion of Old Atlanta Road is high priority, and Dr. Dunn, we're finished with design, we're done with it?
Yeah, well, I was going to say two things, and I've seen my county manager nod, and I'm going to defer to him. What I was going to say is you could either send staff off to do this prioritization and come back and tell you, if I funnel it all to Old Atlanta, we got nothing left.
I think that would be helpful.
And that may be it. Or you could just give them direction now, and I think they can implement it.
I think we need to stop doing that.
May have, you may have enough information.
Well, they're saying design is complete with Dunn, so I think we-
But I think they need to know direction now to stop it.
Yeah, that we will stop-
I think it'd be reasonable for you to tell us that you're okay with us holding the line at design of Dr. Dunn.
Would you like that in the form of a motion?
That's a perfect example, because of the timing, that we're, we were on the cusp of acquiring right-of-way. This is a good time to make that clean cut. So if you'd like to give us that specific direction and to prioritize Old Atlanta, those would be a great starting point for tonight.
Okay. Would you like that in the form of a motion?
I would, Madam Chair.
So moved.
Becca. And may I say, just repeat very quickly, just for the clerk, and I-
Yes.
So the motion is, is to, we have finished design of Dr. Dunn, to take no further steps toward construction of Dr. Dunn, and to reprioritize SPOST 7 funding with an emphasis on the Old Atlanta project.
Four and five.
Correct.
Four and five.
Yes.
Four and five.
Yes.
Amazing. I recommended that five or six years ago and got outvoted.
That's captured, I think, the gist, and I think we would like to see prioritization, or at least a status on those other projects, so we can sift through it if there's anything left. We have a motion, a second please, vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
It's nice that you're on the board long enough to see what other Commissioners voted down comes full circle. To get that Old Atlanta Road done. Brilliant.
All righty. Number four.
Madam Chair, Board Members, item number four is a discussion with respect to the county's roadway abandonment policy. You may recall that earlier on the agenda, we moved actually a proposed abandonment involving the Park at Creekstone. And I think that one of the things that candidly precipitated that movement was the notion that we'd like to take a little bit of a look at our abandonment policy and maybe retool it, maybe not, but otherwise discuss it. So what I've put in your agenda packet is, number one, the county's abandonment policy, and then I also put in the City of Milton's policy. There's nothing magical about that policy, but it does have sort of a tiered request from subdivisions structure. Basically, just in a summary way of saying it is, the larger the number of units in a subdivision, the less the percentage of yeses to requesting formal abandonment has to be secured. The notion is, it's probably different to get 25 yes votes in a 25-unit subdivision, and it's much easier or more reasonable to get 60% in a 500-unit subdivision. Let me just say this at the outset. The issue of abandonment is up to the board. It doesn't matter if it's 100% of a subdivision or 75% that ask you to abandon a road. The only reason you have to abandon it is because this board believes it is in the best interests of the county to abandon. What the policy does, though, is sets the criteria upon which it even makes it to you in the first place, if it's not driven by staff. The policy dictates or sets forth how neighborhoods can come and ask you. And the typical way this approach, it may, I mean, Mr. Kennard may have different ways it may get to you, but the way I think of it is, is when the subdivision comes in and wants to put up gates, and they started out as public road subdivisions, which can't be gated, and now they want to be gated, well, that's an abandonment issue, because we can't gate public roads. I think that's in fact what drove the Park at Creekstone, was that sort of a thing. I mean, and it happens in other situations, they may want to shut down a cul-de-sac or, but I think what's driven this discussion is an entire community very mixed on whether or not they want to take over the maintenance and long-term obligations of their own internal roads, or whether they don't.
And let's face it, when you've bought into a neighborhood thinking it's public roads, and you've paid X amount of dollars, and your bills are figured on that, and all of a sudden, 50%, that could be the newest 50% that has lived in there the shortest amount of time, decides they want to change it, and all of a sudden, you can't make your house payment anymore.
Yep. That's, that's correct.
Yeah, I like this model a lot. I mean, it just, it acts as a filter, basically. I mean, it, you know, get your act together before you even get hurt, basically.
Is this more like Milton's?
Well, well, what I've put in your packet, if you turn to the second page, you'll see a pretty, a very basic graph. And that's really what I wanted to discuss tonight. You'll see it, number of lots and percentage of approval. That, that's, I mean, that's it. I mean, there's more to it than that, but I mean, that's sort of the threshold determination. So if you're in a 20-unit or less subdivision, if you want to request abandonment, 100% of your folks have to want it.
That's good.
21 to 90, 75%, 91 or more, 67%. And you may say, well, what about the covenants? In this situation, we're not getting really wrapped around the axle of the covenants. This is a vote that they would have to take within their-
I'd like to offer something that puts just more thought into the whole overall picture. Should somebody abandon their roads to us after they've already been public? And should we take them over for such a timeframe that those roads become dilapidated? And after every 20 years, they don't renew their covenants, and that HOA goes to funk, we're stuck taking it back anyways. And now they've been gated, and we hadn't been allowed even allow it to be public all those years. I'm just-
Technically, they're private property, though, at that point. We would not necessarily be obligated to-
Yeah, but you're in a, you're in a bad spot.
I know the taxpayers that live in those lots would make that demand-
You're in a bad, bad spot. And I'm, I'm not interested. We've been through this enough-
Yeah.
That sometimes we're going to know better from past experience, and not necessarily us, ourselves, but the county in general, that they're going to, we'll absolutely know better than some of these communities are just going through for the first time.
So there is a provision in the, theirs, under 3 Delta, where it says, they have to file documents to ensure solvency and ability to further demonstrate that they have the financial means to fund the future costs associated with-
Of course.
Maintaining the asset.
Of course. What does that mean exactly? Because let's say 10 years from now, they're up for renewal and they don't, and they, because we've run across the HOAs that have not renewed, and now they're default. What now? Every, how often they have to renew, Ken? Typically every 20?
Well, yeah. I mean, the law allows covenants to basically, if they contain certain language, to extend indefinitely. But it's not uncommon for them to be 20 years and they have to renew them.
And there's nobody to go after. We have to go in and throw a million or two million at a road, all of a sudden, to bring it back up to par.
Well, again, though, I mean, you would want to believe that if a association comes to you and says, we want to take on a very expensive obligation, that they're factoring all that into their equation?
Do we make, do we make them get a bond? Would be my next step.
We could. I mean, this is a policy that you could draft from stem to stern. You could make them put in place bonds, because you're concerned about them allowing the roads to deteriorate, and then once they're full of potholes and deteriorating, they come back to you and ask you to take them over so you can pay them.
I get it. And that's my point. If we allow this, maybe we need to add that they have to also be bonded on them.
Yeah. I will say, though, I mean, John, help me on this. I mean, we've, we've not had a very rigorous policy setting up all these thresholds. We've basically looked at recommendations of staff, and candidly, the good discretion of the Board of Commissioners, but I mean, I don't recall really this coming up that often. John, I'm-
Typical adjustment, not happen that often. Usually, they decide upfront, it'll be a problem.
I don't know.
It's unusual that they would come back to the board and get, request abandonment at a later date, but we've had a few.
We have.
This might be the first one we've had, at least the last three years.
And how many?
Because I don't recall any others-
How many homes does this one subdivision have?
113.
113. And what are they, about a 52, 48 vote right now?
About a 51 and a half to-
Very close. I mean, I don't know how we're getting in the middle of this.
And I'm not exaggerating.
How are we getting in the middle of this is just something else.
With a 3% mark. They are razor thin.
The thing to bear in mind, too, is that a policy is just a filter, right? I mean, ultimately, we still make every decision independently, because it is an asset of the county, so we can, we can, it doesn't matter if they come with 100%, we can still tell them, no, we don't get away.
Ken, the numbers of threshold again?
It was, for, for this one, for instance, under the Milton policy, again, I hate to, but under the Milton policy for a subdivision of this size, it would have required a 67% approval.
I'm, great. And we need it, I agree.
I'm recommending, based on-
I agree.
Before they even come to us, that we put the policy filter in place.
Yeah. But I would, I would recommend the percentages be, leave the 100%, 20 or less, 80% for 21 to 90, and 75% for 91 or more. Because hearing from people that moved in, they can't afford it.
I agree.
And that would have a higher threshold, but still a reasonable if they can-
I mean, can you imagine? You read your covenants restrictions, you do all your due diligence, the law tells you better, and then still something can come up like this that you, there is no way to research.
John, are you good with the numbers?
So you went 180 and 75, that's what you did, Dennis?
Yeah, I said 180 and 75. 80 and 75, which is a little more than-
Do you see any negative to that?
You know, that's, that's better than what we've got. You know, like I say, until a law change, there's 100% for anybody.
Yeah.
Which is just, when the law changes to allow it to be requested by an HOA, then that's why we are where we are. Then it gets put in your lap to make the decision, but it always goes in your lap to make the decision.
Yeah, and how many times have we seen an HOA board not be in, connected real well with the people that live in the subdivision?
Every time.
So whatever percentage you select-
We've had some weird boards.
That just allows it to be brought to the board, which still ultimately, as Ken stated, your decision.
And John, would you, would you then make a, we could put it in where they would make, staff would make a recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's exactly right, Commissioner Brown. My recommendation would not be to adopt the Milton policy, all of it. I would recommend we adopt the graph, subject to the changes you just made, as the threshold for engineering to carry it, carry it to you at all.
And could we then also include a bond? I like that. So if they, if they-
I don't know. What do you think, Ken?
I, I think that's the sort of thing, though, that you could discuss when it makes it to you, is, do you have the financial wherewithal to do this? And if the answer, show us. How are you going to fund these?
Yeah, but I like the idea of a bond.
But then, Ken, I was thinking, something more standardized-
Is that what we get stopped?
We make developers put it up.
We sure do.
That can, as Ken stated, be a decision the board makes at the time of considering the abandonment. That's something that the board can, Ken, to put in the resolution.
It should be in the resolution, that we have the authority to do that.
If we give Ken, if we give-
I will say that for our private streets that start off as being private gate communities, they're subject to the UDC Chapter 18-9, and within that, it doesn't require a bond, but it gives the board the discretion to require a bond.
That's what we need.
Can I suggest this? And the verbiage says that a future board of commissioners should consider, depending on their financial strength, or something to that effect? So because I was just going to remind the future board, what we had discussed, when we always go back and go, well, what was the fault of the board at the time they did something?
Because I'll tell you, in the discussion at Park at Creekstone, there was a great deal of ambivalence over whether they actually could afford it or not, the HOA. The HOA said they could, and a lot of the residents said they could not.
Well, that's because then you put a special assessment, although we're smart enough to know that.
Yeah. So what we can do then, Board Members, is I'll change the policy, add in the graph and put a statement in there. The applicant and the Board of Commissioners shall consider the financial-
Or shall, or shall, I guess it's-
Right. You shall consider it. Now, what, you know, and, and so we can do that. And as John said, you know, you all have to pass a resolution of abandonment that we'll draft. And if you say, I want to have a, you know, a $500,000 bond, it'll be in there.
And the percentages are 180 and 75.
80 and 75.
Commissioners, could I also add that item G, just above that table, references some things in there about emergency service providers, utility providers, school system, postmaster? I think that's a pretty good requirement-
Yeah.
-to require them to provide us documentation that says they've coordinated with these groups, and that their services will not be detrimentally affected by the privatization. So I might suggest you consider that.
Absolutely. But do we not now, in a ordinance now, where they have to give codes or access to all public safety? Separate from this, we already have it, do we not?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
For currently private-
John, do you see anything else we should add here?
I think that about covers it all. You know, like I said, like Ken says, we'll touch through everything else during our review and make whatever appropriate recommendations there are to the board that are incorporated into the resolution.
Commissioner Levent, to your question you asked, sometimes we do have issues with getting access in, though. Not necessarily emergency providers. Typically, when they see those red lights and blue lights, they let them through pretty fast, but some others do have some issues sometimes.
Right. And they're not going to have a gate with a guard at this particular type of a sized neighborhood, so you'd have to have a remote, they'd have to give it to y'all to carry. But that's just a lot to keep up with every station and every, who's got that remote?
We have a, in our, as they require, put an off entry system on it.
Master key, master code, gotcha. Okay.
Madam Chair, could I take a stab at a motion, please, just to help with some verbiage here?
That would be great.
So the, the motion would be for the county attorney, county staff, to bring back a revised Forsyth County roadway abandonment policy to include, when it is an HOA-initiated or requested abandonment, that the thresholds be as set forth in the Milton policy that we just looked at, except changing for the 21 to 90 to be 80%, and 91 or more to be 75%. To also include language that the financial capability of the HOA will be discussed and addressed at the board level, and to also include the items from Sub G in the Milton policy addressing other entities in need of access.
And you mentioned the bond.
So moved.
That was the financials, that's the financial issue.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
What would the timetable of that look like?
As far as when I'll bring that back to you, I can probably have it back to you by the next work session. This is not going to be that complicated.
Cutting pace, baby.
And then two months of hearings.
No, this is an internal policy. This isn't even an ordinance.
Oh.
Good. We need that.
All right. Awesome. Number five.
Board members, I will go ahead and kick this one off. Mr. Johnson has worked a lot on this one as well. This pertains to what we need to do to exploit some state of Georgia funding that was allocated to the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. Actually, Senator Underman placed $50,000 into this year's Georgia budget for Forsyth County, actually, to commence a survey or some sort of a informational gathering to work as a state model with respect to certain developmentally developmentally disable, developmentally disabled, basically identification of 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 need in the county. And I know that Mr. Johnson has been in contact with this particular state agency as far as how to shake loose that funding. And so tonight, we have, in fact, a resolution where you are at, where you would be directing staff to go out for an R F P to actually have a third party commence some surveying in the county to try to find these populations and do do some modeling of what sort of population of this developmentally disabled folks we have in the county. And then I think contemporaneous with that, we would also need to bring back an agreement with this state agency to shake loose the funding. I will tell you that based upon what the county manager has been able to shake loose, it doesn't look like they're looking for a very rigorous contract. It looks like it's fairly modest. And candidly, I think they're looking for us to tell them how we intend to undertake this surveying effort. Mr. Johnson?
Yes. So so Commissioners, I've been talking very recently, because he was on vacation until Tuesday. Alan Morgan is the Division Director of Field Operations for D B H T D. He literally lives in our county. He told me that his two kids went to North Forsyth. He very recently learned that they needed to do this. And what he decided was that he needs a document for his financial people. But he shortened the paperwork to simply give us an M O U. And as as Ken has indicated, we get to fill in the blank. So I think the language that Ken put together for the resolution you have before you is everything that we need. I can tell you that Alan is excited about this. So sometimes you have a state agency with a person that has a legislator plunk something in their budget, wants nothing to do with it because it wasn't their idea. He's excited about the fact that the survey would lead to the next step, which is to try to create, for this very narrow, very defined population, some housing opportunity within our community. So Donna is here. Donna, literally, with your approval tonight, will release the R F P tomorrow. Alan told me he would get back with us to help identify vendors because our challenge, and when I went to Tim with this, our challenge is, we don't have anyone that's an expert in developmentally disabled individuals. We don't have anyone that's an expert on housing. We identified Ruthie Brew as the person we would task because we needed to have someone who would be Donna's client, who will actually work with the R F P. When we get the proposals in, we'll try to co-opt D B H T D to participate in the review. We want them to be happy, obviously, because we'd like Senator Underman to be able to put money into next year's budget. And actually, Alan was very excited at the prospect that that she would do that.
She kept telling us, when Laura and I went down there and met with her, that getting a line item was a huge thing. Getting that, that could lead to other things. I mean, she kept saying that.
So we're prepared to move forward. Just need, we, because this is the type of activity we haven't done, we just, to be cautious, needed to get board approval. But as I said, Donna sat here for nine and a half hours, so I should let Donna have the opportunity to tell you. But but we're ready to roll. It doesn't look like we have to wait on anything more. We will bring back that M O U. They sent it for Ruthie to sign. I think it's probably more appropriate for the board to sign. But.
I mean, do y'all think Ruthie knows enough to be able to pull this off? I mean, I'm not doubting her, but.
I think they'll help pull us across the finish line, Commissioner.
But she is senior services.
Well, we don't have anyone that has the housing experience. We don't have anyone that has the experience of working on developmentally disabled issues. But a lot of those people are going to be very similar to the population that Ruthie does work with because of the fact that she's worked with state agencies on senior issues and grant programs. She's the best we have. But at this point, if they can help us identify the potential vendors, then they're going to give us the data. They're going to collect the data. They're going to help. Part of what the line item, you have the line item in this this resolution. Part of the line item is to create a model that can be replicated around the state. And that's part of what, how I suspect Senator Underman got the the approval of the rest of our committee, because there's value beyond Forsyth. But we're the target. And as we understand it, we will be the target for the next step, which will be funding for housing. And of course, we need to figure out how that'll be accomplished. But we don't have any of that information yet. As Ken has structured this, we have no liability of the county. We're basically going to go out and say, this can't cost more than $50,000 because that's what the state has 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 provided for this. And they have not indicated that they think that it would necessarily cost more. So I think you're safe in terms of giving us this direction. We'll move quickly. The the state will help us find vendors that have the capability to deliver. We have no capability to do this analysis ourselves.
Lisa Bennett would be a good resource if we needed to have one.
And she's probably a good person to be part of the evaluation for the R F P when we get the proposals in. Because she'll bring that expertise in that industry. And she's probably going to be as excited as we are because, as Alan told me today, and he knows Lisa, you know, his challenge is, she has clients that need a place to live. And what he told me, last piece, because the hour is late and I told Donna she could talk. But what he told me is, their biggest challenge at D B H T D with the developmentally disabled is when they get a call that there is a caregiver that has had a stroke, is in the hospital, is not going to go home, and sitting in the waiting room at the hospital Friday night is their adult child who doesn't have a caregiver and in essence, really no longer has a home. So he's excited at the idea that you have people in this community that want to push us to have a solution before it's Friday night and someone has no place to go and no caregiver to deal with them. So he's excited about it. And as I said, he lives here. He may work in Gainesville, but his and his address is Gainesville because he lives in D5. But but he's excited about the opportunity to work with us on this.
Yeah. And this is really new.
Donna, I'm sorry.
This is new territory for us, too. So I appreciate you guys figuring out how we obtained this. Because when Cindy and I came back from that, I don't know that we even knew how to get things rolling.
We did.
And and you guys were able to to kind of scramble when it circled back around that we needed to get this done. And I appreciate what you guys did to kind of chart that out and and get it done quickly.
Just for two, if y'all don't mind, two questions. This is this is for disabled. We understand that's a study to help us see which way to go. Number two, Cindy, you said that this will start us and maybe put up more doors for an antitrust, told you, for other things. What did you mean by other things?
I think just having the line item, it it hopefully that the survey will come back how great the need is, and then she'll be able to find more funds, along with, we don't want to leave out Lieutenant Governor Jeff Duncan helped tremendously. And that, once you have a line item, then you can add to the line item.
But for disabled, that's what we're looking for. Okay, very good. I got you.
Yeah. And I think, too, that what part of this, and I don't know whether this will be part of the scope or not, is to look at what the reality of rolling something like this this is out in a community of our size. Because I think ultimately, it's going to take a private, a private partnership to to deliver on the product. We're really not in the housing business as a county. And so I think that's probably some of what will get scoped there. And that the study, at least, will provide a model for how that is done in our county.
I think Donna is going to tell us. Do you know more about the scope or what?
I've I've worked with information from Ken Gerard's office and with the county manager's office. And I've done a draft scope that basically goes over what the resolution items are and to provide you with the data of the study of what what our needs are in the county and any recommendations that they could provide. I actually finished that this evening and I did send it to Ruthie Brew, just for her unification as well. We've already reached out to a number of our local partners to see who they would think might be interested in doing this type of survey or study for us and make recommendations to the board and and let us see what the data is. I think that's the biggest thing to find out.
If y'all will give me just a moment. Michael, will you come up for a second?
I'll be happy.
This all started from an email that I always avoid his last name, Masalanka. Whatever. That Michael sent me and it it just worked out. Will you tell them your experience?
I am the parent of a special needs adult child with an IQ of less than 60. And I am aging myself, and my wife is older than I am. When we die, we've done the best we could to provide for her financially, but she will have no place to go. She will become a ward of the state, wherever that may be. So with her disability, I became very involved in the Forsyth County Special Olympics. And I can honestly tell you that we have nine athletes who are over 60 years old that live in two foster homes in Dolonica. How do they get to the games? We have to go get them. We have five athletes who are wheelchair-bound, autistic, and I'm not making excuses, but they're going to need help. Four of the, four of our athletes live with aged grandparents. Quite a few live with parents that are going to get old eventually, too. So.
And those are just the ones you know?
That's all I know. There are 309 Special Olympians in Forsyth County. Susan Darlington, who's the transition coordinator with the Forsyth County School System, would be a valuable asset.
Huge.
50,000 students in Forsyth County, 10%.
Are special needs.
Are special needs.
They are.
There's a million things I could share. What got me going was, not you guys, but maybe eight or nine years ago, this dais approved $1.2 million for an animal shelter. I'm all for dogs and cats. And I'm all for humans, too. So I'd entertain any questions you may have. I'm not an expert. But I've kind of become a special parent. Also, I sent, I sent, don't tear up, please, I'll start tearing up. I sent the the letter that Commissioner Mills sent to me, to our president of our Special Olympics Board. And she wrote back to me saying, why are we spending $50,000? We'll give the information for free. So there's a multitude of information that she can share with you, too, from the Special Olympian side. We just completed our fall games in Valdosta, Georgia. They performed admirably. We had, this is going to break your heart, we had one athlete who won a gold medal. I don't know what sport it was. But after the awards presentation, one of the athletes from another county did not win a medal and unfortunately had a meltdown. Our athlete from Forsyth County took off his or her gold medal and put it on the fellow that didn't win a medal. Would you do that? No. But that's what these kids do. They just love to be normal. And unfortunately, athletics allows them to be normal. I'm fighting the Coming Aquatic Center for reasonable times for our adaptive swimmers to get in the pool. We're paying a premium to get a time slot where their medicine doesn't interfere with their ability to survive in the pool. Our aquatic center is not really prepared for special needs swimmers. The director has no clue of the American with Disabilities Act. I mean, it's frightening. I could give you horror stories, but I'm not going to do that. I'm going to give you the good and the positive.
I bet you can remind them.
I went there the other day and she was in a meeting, so that's fine.
I've got faith in you.
Oh, I'll, no, I'm just thankful that you picked up the ball and ran with it.
Well, we we found somebody to listen. And it worked out. I mean, literally, it was a godsend. And I've got to say that because I got his email. Doug Collins was the speaker at mental health, or his group was.
He has a special needs child.
But that happened that morning. That that next day, I went to an A C C dinner and Renee was there. And she said, what, what's something for South County needs? What about a drug rehab place? And I said, what about housing for special needs? And she said, can you get some meeting with with Jeff Duncan? And I said, I'll be right back. And I went in the bathroom and I started texting Jeff Duncan from the bathroom. And he replied just like that.
We were down there for what, the next?
We were down there within the next few days?
Yeah.
No, it was the next day.
It was the next day.
It was the very next day.
It was the next day. And then we were out in Gwinnett, visiting their facilities the next week.
We did go out to Gwinnett. We've got to get, we've got to get our community service board.
Engaged.
Engaged and better engaged in the community. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Cindy, I think you probably want to make the motion for the resolution.
I will be happy to. I'd like to make a motion for the resolution directing county staff to prepare and issue a request for proposals to conduct a survey in conjunction with the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities related to the developmentally disabled community in Forsyth County with funding to come in whole or part from the state of Georgia.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries.
Donna, thank you.
With a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Ken.
Oh, man, Ken, you better have the right answer tonight. Counselor, is there a need for executive session?
Madam Chair, there is not.
That is the correct answer.
If he gave you the other answer, I was going to.
So so my next question, is there a motion to to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And we stand adjourned at 9:45.
I said it would be 10:00.
Woo! 9:45 PM. That's not so bad.